Commission, may I read that item into record?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Tia. That's PDD 220129. It's a comprehensive plan amendment. CPAL 20, Prens 16 for Newport Corners. You are sitting on as the local planning agency again on this item. It's providing for text amendments to future land use element appendix, a map amendment to future land use map 2-9, amending sub area policy, sub area map, rather, nine prensed 25 Newport Corners, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency. We're asking that you find it consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Anybody here to speak on P-18? No one?
And there's no one on WebEx either on the item. Yes, if I can move on to P17. It is listed as a regular item, but I would like to see if you could call for public comment and see if there's anyone here to speak on this item. We do not have anyone signed up to speak on WebEx. So if I may read it, it's PDD 227573, MHC Forest Lake Estates Expansion. It's a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District C2, General Commercial District with specific uses, and ER2, a State Residential District, to RMH Mobile Home District. Comes here with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, any applicants present? Anyone here to object?
And I do not have anyone signed up to speak on that item on WebEx.
Okay, so we're, are we putting that on consent then?
So that concludes your consent? Or items that, including items that were on regular that moved to consent?
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
No second.
Motion and second, any further discussion of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Push like sign. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was.
One's leaving, Chuck.
Yeah, right. Liam Ian, six?
Yes, Liam Devine, Planning and Development, PC6. If you guys are ready, I can continue?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. PDD 22-2096, in the name of Jacobs Holding, WC LLC, and Jacobs Mitsubishi, Mitsubishi, sorry. It is an alternative standard request to increase the maximum allowable height on one monument sign from 11 feet to 20 feet in exchange for overall reduction in total signage on the property in a C2 General Commercial District. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Eagleston Boulevard and Bruce B. Downs Boulevard. And this is a look at the aerial view. The surrounding future land use to the north, south, and west is MU, mixed use, and to the east is PD, Plan Development. The surrounding zoning to the north and south is C2, and to the east is AR and MPUD, and to the west is MPUD. The subject site will consist of the proposed Mitsubishi Wesley Chapel vehicle dealership in development in C2 General Commercial District, and is located on the corner of Eagleston and Bruce B. Downs. The access to the property is from Eagleston Boulevard, which is privately owned and maintained. The surrounding area is characterized by commercial uses consisting of the Lexus of Wesley Chapel and Wesley Chapel Toyota, Wells Fargo Bank, and Village Market Shopping Plaza. The applicant is requesting to increase the height of one monument sign from 11 feet to 20 feet in exchange for a 47.5% reduction in a sign structure area for a ground sign from 200 square feet to 105 square feet, and a reduction of 83% of the wall sign area from 255 square feet to 45.02 square feet through the elimination of an unconstructed ground monument sign on Bruce B. Downs Boulevard and an unconstructed wall sign on the east side building elevation facing Bruce B. Downs. And this is the proposed monument sign. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval with conditions.
All right, Liam, any questions? Here. Applicant present? All right. Anyone here to object? Nobody to object?
None.
Oh, you have someone on WebEx, okay. All right, you want to hear what the objection is before you speak, or you want to speak now?
Let's hear what they have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good afternoon, I'm Barbara Deacon. I, my office is 2905.
You have Barbara Deacon? Okay.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Ms. Deacon, we cannot hear you.
Okay.
And we're working on it, but once we get to hear you, if you would please state your name and address for the record and whether you have been sworn, thank you.
Thank you. If your audio is muted. Can you hear me? I'm trying to speak.
You just repeat everything she's saying. I found it here with the speaker on it.
I'm speaking, can you hear me? Hello?
Ms. Deacon, we cannot hear you. So we're having, there's some technical difficulties on possibly both ends, I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm trying to speak.
As my understanding, that she's audible on YouTube. Is there a way to play her through YouTube on our speaker system?
Should I be logging in somewhere else?
Just put a cell phone on speaker and hold up the microphone.
I can see everybody on the panel.
Let that go.
Shall I proceed?
Questions for, can we just direct them through you?
Can you hear me?
Ms. Deacon, the other WebEx participants can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Deacon, please state your name and address for the record and whether you've been sworn.
My name is Barbara Deacon. My address is 2905 Bay Shore Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, and I have been sworn.
Eve, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate your time today. I am the managing agent for North 232 Property Owners Association, which manages and maintains the property that contains the Lexus dealership, the Toyota dealership, and Eagleston Boulevard down to the Bay Care Hospital that's currently under construction. The Board of Directors have asked me to register an objection to the increase in height of the proposed sign from 11 feet to 20 feet, primarily because there are three existing monument signs on Bruce B. Downs Boulevard that are 11 or 12 feet tall. There is a monument sign for the Village Market, which is 11 feet tall. The Seven Oaks Monument Sign at Eagleston Boulevard is also, is 12 feet tall. And then the Wells Fargo Monument Sign, which is directly south of the proposed dealership, is also 12 feet tall. As the staff recommendation report indicates, there was an alternative standard sign approved by Pasco County for the Lexus of Wesley Chapel. However, the variance in that sign had a frontage on I-75, not Bruce B. Downs Boulevard. So the Board of Directors for North 232 would ask that you consider maintaining a consistency of 11 to 12 feet tall monument signs on Bruce B. Downs Boulevard as opposed to approving a variance for a 20-foot sign, a 20-foot tall sign for the proposed dealership. I thank you for your time and your consideration and hope that you'll, that you won't diminish the size of the existing monument signs that currently exist on Bruce B. Downs. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you want to come up and,
if you want to come up and,
state your case.
State your case.
State your name and address, please.
Thank you, Commissioner, my name is Mark Branchley. I live at 3790 Beacon Ridgeway, Clermont, Florida. Represent the owner, Jacobs Holdings, Wesley Chapel LLC. Barbara was selective in her,
Excuse me, you have been sworn?
Yes, I have been sworn, yes. She was very selective in her description of the number of 20-foot signs and 11, 12, or 12-foot signs up and down Bruce B. Downs. I did not know there was an objection, otherwise I would have provided the commission with a series of Google Street View maps which show within, and I just have it on my phone, within 500 feet of this intersection, Eagleston, which is, which was mentioned, is a private road. And Bruce B. Downs, which of course is a county road. There are six 20, or in excess of 20-foot signs north and across the street from this sign here. The Sun Trust, Sunny's Barbecue, Taco Time. I mean, it's obvious that she was very selective in her discussion with regard to the limitation of 11-foot signs. So we are, the dealership is complying to the 11-foot along Eagleston Boulevard in front of the dealership, which is the private road. But on Bruce B. Downs, which is a public thoroughfare, which is an arterial with fast-moving heavy traffic, this ordinance allows through the standard, alternative standard process, increasing a sign from 11 foot to 20 feet, provided that there is a reduction of signage on the property. And it's a 35% minimum reduction. As Liam mentioned, if we consider the reduction of sign area on monument signs, it is 47% reduction. And considering the wall signs reduction, that they could have built on the walls facing north to Eagleston or east to Bruce B. Downs, they have reduced the amount 82%. So we are significantly greater than the ordinance allows as a minimum reduction in order to allow one sign to be increased to 20 feet. And because increasing this to 20 feet is really very compliant with the, this existing area as it gets closer to Route 54, it is very consistent and harmonious with this commercial neighborhood as well as the very fast and busy traffic of Bruce B. Downs. So we have clearly met all of the measurement requirements as well as the aesthetic and cultural and emotional requirements that the ordinance requires us to show as findings of fact to comply with the current Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and all of the intent and purpose of the sign code. Any questions for me?
I have a question for staff, not really for the applicant. I don't know, Liam or Denise, which one of you handled this? So I guess I'll ask you both. So one of the criteria in the code is that it has to be compatible with other nearby signs. The agenda doesn't only shows a picture of this sign, it doesn't really show pictures of the other signs in the area. How did staff determine whether it was or was not compatible with other nearby signs?
So Mr. Branchley did discuss that there are other signs at, I think he mentioned the Sunny's. I think he mentioned the bank is a little taller than the 11 feet that Ms. Deacon stated. Also, there is a Lexus, as stated, that also applied for a, an actual alternative standard as well. There is a variance that's also granted in the area. And there's a, granted, some of those signs did, were approved under the prior versions of the sign code, but there is the compatibility aspect of those signs. Additionally, Mr. Branchley or Jacobs Mitsubishi is foregoing the installation of a monument sign on Bruce B. Downs Boulevard because this sign will actually be on Eagleston Boulevard. They're also foregoing the installation of wall signage along the east building elevation, which will also face Bruce B. Downs Boulevard.
I guess some staff does think it's compatible with other nearby signs?
Yes.
Yes, Denise, can you show me a site plan or aerial? What exactly is the location of this sign, please?
Sure, of course. Do you have it in your PowerPoint?
I'm going to do a Google Map or something that you can show me, please?
Roberto, I have it here if you'd like to see it. Here's Eagleston, this is the 20-foot ground sign here. This is, this is the bank here.
So these are proposed, right?
Yes.
Focus will be able to pick up your conversation. So you probably need to get him back in his mic and then say whatever you're going to say to him there.
Okay.
The reason why is that, I was at the podium, is I don't think my microphone's working, but it does sound like it is now. So I am showing the subject property, which is at the southwest corner of the intersection of Bruce B. Downs and Eagleston Boulevard. So as you can see, this parcel has quite a few feet of lineal frontage along Eagleston Boulevard. And the sign code basically says that you can have one sign for every 300 feet of lineal frontage on a road. So this parcel can have several monument signs along Eagleston Boulevard, and it can have one monument sign along Bruce B. Downs. However, in the conditions of approval as provided to the planning commission, they are actually foregoing the installation of one monument sign along Eagleston Boulevard. And they are also foregoing the installation of wall signs on the east building elevation that would fence Eagleston Boulevard. And I'm going to try to see if I, for your, for your use, if I can pull up the site plan that's been approved so that maybe that will give a better perspective of the location.
Can you do a zoom out, a little bit of this map? A zoom out, so I want to see a little bit more of the area. Okay, that is fine. My only concern here is that when you make reference at the business that they have higher sign, those businesses have been in the area for over 15 years. No doubt about it. So those are Sunny's, Taco Bell. These have been businesses, I don't know if it's grandfather, but they have, those sign have been there for over 15 years. We have a new rules, or new rules that we updated to follow those. The reference with the Lexus sign that is higher, if I know mistake, is facing 75. It's not facing Bruce B. Downs. It's totally different, in my opinion, the perspective that we see it. This is facing Bruce B. Downs at the west sides of Bruce B. Downs that we have. If you do a zoom out, we have next to the lot, we have the south side Wells Fargo Bank, and the rest of that is residential plus the new Bay Hospital that is building there. A question for you, the hospital requests a higher sign for them, or no? Okay. The, you see, we have green, green residential. The only building that we have from there all the way to the south, that is 56, commercial unit is 56, and a couple of shopping plazas that we have around there. All these buildings have been followed the rule of the higher designs. So I cannot compare these requests with the signs that are at the, at the northeast side that we will have the Publix Plaza, the Taco Bell. My concern, and I go in against this one, it's just for that. I don't see why we cannot have a sign that follow our rules where the Mitsubishi exposed. I believe it's a gray lot, gray lot, and is in the area that need to be, like they say, they have Lexus, they have Toyota. And I understand there are going to be new dealers at the south side of this lot facing 75. But that's only my comment that I have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the applicant?
I guess I have a question for the applicant, hand staff. Is there any, if they were to build an 11-foot sign, I guess they could build an 11-foot sign as a right, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They can build an 11-foot sign as a right, and then the code also allows 15% addition if they use like architectural features. So they could really build a taller sign.
What's the maximum they could build as a right? So are there any, I guess, barriers to visibility of a 13-foot sign? In other words, is there, is there trees there that would prevent it from being visible at 13 feet? Or some other feature that, that would block the bottom 13 feet of the sign?
No, that there would not be. Based on my several site visits to the location and based on their site plan that's in the process of being reviewed, there would not.
Because I do remember, I mean, I was probably the only one here when Lexus got approved. I guess Denise, you were probably here too. But I do remember that part of the reason DRC approved that one was because of the interstate. Because of the way the interstate was oriented relative to the business, you couldn't see the bottom of the sign if you looked from the interstate. And so that was one of the reasons it was allowed to have a higher sign. I guess what I'm asking, is there anything similar to that occurring here? And you're saying no?
No, there isn't anything similar. I do recall that one, I can write that up myself, and it happens to be with the exit ramp on the interstate and different things happen to do with the grade of the sign where the Lexus was going to be located. You'll have that situation.
So I guess I'll ask an applicant the related question then. So why do you need the others? If it's not for visibility, why do you need the additional seven feet, apparently?
It is visibility, because of the, the dealership is, is not really located facing the street. So they're foregoing any identification on Bruce B. Downs except for this sign. And it, 20 feet high is, has been proven visually and geometrically to be a much more visible sign than an 11-foot sign. And, and it's important to note that the ordinance talks about compatibility. And to the earlier question, whether or not the signs that are in excess of 20 feet are in a former ordinance or whether they are in the current ordinance, it doesn't matter because compatibility is what it is. Is this sign going to be compatible with the neighborhood, with the commercial area around it? And if they are prior to the current ordinance, that does not enter into compatibility. It is what it is. And this ordinance allows the increase up to 20 feet, and it caps it at 20 feet. In fact, that's, that is mentioned three or four times during the application. Is there, is there going to be any sign over 20-foot on this property? And of course, the answer is no, because that is the absolute maximum after all alternatives are considered throughout the county. And so we clearly meet the conditions of this specific code, this specific site, and all of the discretionary requirements that are imposed upon the opportunity to increase as we forego 85% of signs on the building and 57% signage on, on monument signs. So we are clearly complying to the code in trying to reduce the overall impact and proliferation of signs. Putting one sign instead of two monument signs. That's a good trade-off.
I'd like to make another comment in reference to your words, and I express, I appreciated what you say. I drive every single day across that land in front of the Lexus building as well. I live in Seven Oaks. So I can tell you that exposure of the sign of 11 feet is more than enough there. When you see that we keep and we follow the design of the area surrounded, I disagree with you. When we go, we pass the northeast corner of Bruce B. Downs, that is where those signs have been there for a long time, that are taller than 11 feet. You cannot see from this lot, as soon you pass that one, driving south, any of those buildings. When you go south, you see just green area in every side that is Estancia on the east and Seven Oaks on the west. The new structures that have been built there following the new rule, including the Bay Care Hospital that have been there, they have been following those 11 feet. When you say I want to, I want to reduce the size of those signs that you are going to build in the existing design that you have for the Mitsubishi dealership, is fine with that, but the exposed that you have to those dealerships are against the Eagleston Boulevard. And the law, the shape of the law, give you enough exposed to understand that it's a Mitsubishi dealer there. No doubt about it.
Could you speak a little, can you speak a little slower? I'm having a hard time understanding.
Okay, I will go back and I will start again. So basically, I disagree with you when you say that this sign matched what is around the area. It's not. When you drive south from 54 all the way Bruce B. Downs to 56, you see green areas, and souther of this lot, you have the new building that Bay Care are building for a new hospital there that follow the ordinance that we have at this point for these type of signs. The same way, when I see the shape of the lot that is facing Eagleston Boulevard, you have enough exposed, and that is why you can reduce the size of your signs. I understand you want to build a 20-foot ground sign, market sign facing Bruce B. Downs. I don't see why, because at 11-foot sign, well-designed, we have exposed enough and we'll keep the design standards that we have. That is all my point, and I just disagree with to build or increase the height of this sign there. Is, we try and we keep trying to keep building without those variants. We are going to start creating precedent that, okay, these guys did 20-foot sign. South side of that lot, 80% from. South side of that lot, eighty percent from fifty-four to fifty-six is area that is not developed yet. Those developers, when they coming here to start asking for permit application, they are going to base in this sample that we increased the sign here to ask for another one. And I want to see how we are going to manage that debate in that point. That's all my comments.
First of all, this is not a variance.
I'm sorry if I say a wrong term.
This is a conditional use, basically, that based upon discretionary alternatives and trade-offs, allowing to increase the height of a single sign by reducing other signage on the site that is a permitted amount of signage. Your ordinance allows this alternative standard. And anyone else coming south, and by the way, the reason that you you don't see any signs is because the zone has changed. It's not a commercial zone all the way down.
Correct. Okay, let me just let me just stop you there, because you had an opportunity to make your presentation. And so we don't need you to pontificate further on something that we've already talked about several times. If you want to respond in terms of a question, then we can respond in terms of a question.
Do you have any other questions for this?
No, sir. No, Chairman.
Okay, does anybody else have a question? Okay.
Guess I just one question as far as the compatibility goes. I think somebody referenced at some point, somebody said that there was taller signs in the area. Can can we show on the map?
Yeah, that's, I'd like to see that too. Thank you.
Yeah, as Roberto said, I think they're further toward the intersection.
Towards fifty-six or fifty-four?
Fifty-four.
Okay, because yeah, I'm flying around trying to find them.
Like Burger King has a really tall, but again, that's right, right by there, I believe.
This is a little bit difficult because they're not giving me up on the microphone. You're still not giving me up on the microphone?
Okay, and I'm really sorry. And to Roberto's point, those signs did predate the current land development code, which does not allow for lollipop signs or those type of signs. So you do have in that general area, you do have a, as I believe Chris mentioned, there is a Burger King, there is the shopping center to the north, there is a Sunnys Barbecue, there's a, so in that general area, yes, that's that's where we were. So where you say Village Market, there's a tall sign there. There's also a tall sign at the at the intersection of Wesley Chapel Boulevard and Bruce B. Downs. Of course, again, as Roberto stated, those did predate the sign ordinance as we know it today.
Denise, if that area redeveloped, would they be able to build those same signs?
They would not be able to build those same signs. They would be able to build up to eleven feet with a fifteen percent allowance for an architectural topper on the top of the sign.
So I just want to make one comment, because I don't think what the applicant stated is correct. This is not a conditional use. It's also not a variance. It's an alternative standard, and it's an alternative standard that has specific criteria. One of those criteria is signs be compatible with other nearby signs, and that includes things such as form, proportion, scale, color, material, surface treatment, overall sign size, and the size and style of lettering. So unfortunately, compatibility is one of those things that's kind of in the eye of the holder. And so, I mean, if you all feel like you need to see pictures of these other signs to determine compatibility, you could, in theory, continue it, just so you have those pictures, because they don't appear to be anywhere in our agenda. But that would be up to the planning commission. Or you can make a decision based on what you have in front of you. That's up to you all. But I just wanted to be clear that statement that this is a conditional use is not accurate. And you can decide whether you approve it based on compatibility with other nearby signs.
So the taller signs are north of the site?
The taller signs are north of the site, yes. That is accurate, yes, yes. With the exception of the Lexus that was stated that was approved under under the current sign code. But again, David explained that it had to do with visibility, because there the exit ramp and that interchange was changing at that time. So there's a visibility issue. It was very low, that sign, the the ground where that sign is located.
Down there on this physical property or at that intersection of Eaglesston and Bruce B. Downs, are there any other signs at that location other than it looks like there's a median sign in Eaglesston for Seven Oaks?
There's a monument sign. I can pull it up for you if you want.
It's a monument sign that also I think is divided in four signs, one is Lexus, the other one is Toyota, and a couple of other businesses there.
Like Google Earth and see if you can do that area.
And Wells Fargo has a sign too, but it looks like it's less than ten feet.
Outside, and it's really low-key sign.
Yep.
Yeah, so let me just ask, is there any other questions?
Amy, did you want to say that?
No, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, and I have your motion.
And I move a motion to deny, what number is this? It's PC, this is sixteen?
Six.
This is six.
Well, to be clear, since you're disagreeing with status recommendation, I think you need to state the reason. I suspect it's because it's not compatible with nearby, is that your reason?
It's not compatible and it's not under the existing ordinance that we have implement in the county.
Okay, so we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I tend to agree with Roberto. I think we're just setting a dangerous precedent as we move south of the commercial components up near the intersection. So, I mean, I agree and I'll second the motion to deny based on compatibility.
Right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion of the motion?
Well, a question for Denise. So, I mean, there are a couple of locations like Wawa up on fifty-four Chick-fil-A. I mean, are there any alternative standards for for those locations that you're aware of?
I am not aware. It would come through our office, so there have not been alternative standards for those locations.
Fair enough.
Hospital that was in question, they've, I don't know where they are in the process, but it's your assumption at this point that they're not asking for any variance?
I have not heard from them as to whether they're going to seek any type of variance or alternative standard. I would imagine we would have heard by this point, but we have not.
Those two.
Signs, or the permit for signs is usually issued even after the building, so it's possible that they could still seek one.
Awesome.
I see this building how having built every day, and I think they're around seventy percent of the construction done of the building. So they are really close to to finish the last phase of the project.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and further discussion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All in favor of denial?
Aye.
Clerk, could you check if you can hear me now? Madam Clerk? Can you hear me now on your? Awesome, thank you. So now we're going to move to item P nineteen. And I believe Mr. Petos is going to be presenting that item. I do want to mention for housekeeping, the applicant, Mr. Two and his team have received forty-five minutes of time, and Mr. Tom Sue has requested five minutes, and those requests have been granted. Thank you.
I also requested Attorney Chelsea Walder, Dr. I also requested six minutes.
Yeah.
Did you? Thank you so much, Mr. Clerk.
No, we didn't.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
I'm Terry.
It's already been a long day. Okay, before the board, the planning commission board today is going to be Seven Oaks MPD parcel S nineteen, PDD twenty-two, one-one-eight. This was previously before the planning commission as PDD twenty-one, seven-five-oh-seven. This item has returned to the planning commission at the request of the Board of County Commissioners due to there being identified insufficient public notice given for the September ninth public hearing on the part of the part of the county, the Planning and Development Department. The BCC remanded this item back to the planning commission for redo with sufficient public notice, which has been done. So the applicant previously proposed to modify the Seven Oaks MPD master plan redevelopment to add multifamily as a land use as an allowed alternate use on parcel S nineteen. Utilizing the approved land use equivalency matrix to accomplish this, the previous application centered mainly on just multifamily for parcel S nineteen. It was a standalone land use. Currently, the allowed primary use on parcel S nineteen is retail and office, and the allowed alternate use, which is retail, and the allowed alternate use is office. Parcel S nineteen is partially built out and contains a major retailer, various small retail shops, and some out parcels, and I'll show that in an aerial image shortly. The applicant, since the Board of County Commissioners remanded the project back to the planning commission in October, the applicant has modified the proposal for the Seven Oaks MPD to add both multifamily as in allowed land use on parcel S nineteen and twenty thousand square feet of commercial retail office space on the same parcel as a vertically integrated mixed-use building. Here's the aerial, and I get my mouse. There we are. So this is the partial build-out of parcel S nineteen, indicating with the large big box here and the various small-scale retail operations that are up along Zero Fifty-Six. And then the red highlight is indeed the subject parcel for today's public hearing. This is illustrating the zoning in the area, which is all MPUD, the Seven Oaks MPUD, and the subject parcels highlighted. And this is showing the future land use for the area. This map is illustrating the location of parcel S nineteen and the overall Seven Oaks MPD and development area. Get my cursor up again. There we are. This edge along here is I seventy-five. The hypoten, yes, the hypotenuse is I seventy-five. This long piece right here is the Bruce B. Downs portion of Seven Oaks. Then the southern edge down below is the Zero Fifty-Six, and it then goes up and around a couple of wetlands there at the southwest corner of what would complete the triangle there. And so you can see that parcel S nineteen is largely built out on the on the east side and on the west side. There are numerous interconnects that had been proposed by the product, early on by the MPUD into parcel S nineteen. On August nineteen, nineteen eighty-six, the Board of County Commissioners approved the Saddle Brook Village Development of Regional Impact, DRI. Through those resolutions and rezoning petitions, the MPUD and master plan have been modified several times since the original approval to add uses, modify uses, and to revise primary and alternate approved uses associated land use equivalency matrix. The most recent modification was in November of twenty nineteen, which allowed a brewery as an allowed use. So as it was proposed previously and presented to the planning commission back in September at an insufficiently published public meeting, the modifications to the MPUD were found to be inconsistent with the provisions of the Pasco County Conference Plan as detailed in that agenda memo, PDD twenty-one, seven-five-oh-seven, and the analysis contained in the memo, OEG twenty-one, ten-eight-four. As it is currently proposed, as it was submitted to the Planning and Development Department in early to mid-November, reviewed, and then forwarded to the planning commission here for consideration. As it is currently proposed, with vertically integrated mixed-use development, the modifications to the MPUD are found to be consistent with the provisions of the conference plan as outlined in the in the current agenda memo, PDD twenty-two, oh-one-eighteen, which still references the OEG memo that was previously identified. Here, I think it's good to take a quick break and discuss some of the main differences between the application, as you heard it in September, though it was insufficiently publicly noticed, and the current application. So in in the original application review, there was eighty-two thousand square feet identified as potential for a commercial retail office. And this was based on the entitlement that existed on the on the on the property, and so an analysis was conducted illustrating how the eighty-two thousand square feet of commercial retail office was essentially more economically impactful for the county, more valuable in revenue generation, et cetera, than a standalone multifamily land use. In the current proposal, the comparison is made against sixty thousand square feet of commercial retail office. It was through a number of discussions with the developers who are in the business of identifying what is available and can be feasibly built on a constrained site. Their argument was that sixty thousand square feet was feasible to be built on on the property. And so there was a rough analysis conducted on the, go back, on essentially the highlighted parcel here. Can sixty thousand square feet of commercial retail office be developed on that site with minor or no modifications to land development code? And the rough analysis indicated that it was feasible that sixty thousand could fit on the property. What it amounted to is basically a, get my cursor up again, a building, if you located a sixty thousand square foot building on the on the backside, on the north side of the drive aisle here, you would essentially be required close to ninety thousand square feet of parking lot around that building to accommodate the necessary parking totals. And then there was some residual square footage required for buffer yards and all the other trappings of the site plan. And so, having done that, sixty thousand square feet was identified as as reasonable to actually be built versus the eighty-two thousand maximum entitlement on that property. And so the point of the analysis from September and the point of the analysis today is how does the multifamily plus the commercial retail office make up the delta to the impact, to the economic impact of the county with sixty, versus sixty thousand square feet? The comprehensive plan policies talk about a property being revenue generating. It does not necessarily say that you have to beat another land use per se, although that is at the discretion, and obviously, the best choice to pick, that you want the more most lucrative land use to prevail. In this case, as a standalone, the three hundred and twenty multifamily established a value that was short of the of the original analysis with the entitlement of eighty-two thousand square feet. It was, it also established a value that was short of the sixty thousand square foot analysis. And so the question here is, how do you make up the difference between multifamily and the sixty thousand square feet? So sixty thousand square feet of commercial retail, that the values are in the in the report, off the top of my head, I don't remember them outright. But the question is, how do you make up that value? Adding twenty thousand square feet of commercial retail to make it a vertically mixed-use integrated building or development makes up that value difference? makes up that value difference, brings them at par, and then even exceeds it in, in some of the areas? And as a result, by doing this exercise, um, we've identified that, uh, a mixed-use vertically integrated building that does meet the comprehensive plan policies that were previously identified. Presently, Seven Oaks. Go forward. Presently, Seven Oaks is developed as a mixed-use community with residential office and commercial uses and recreational facilities. As proposed, a, a proposed land use change from commercial office to a standalone residential multifamily is still not consistent with policy Flu one-eight-seven, one-eight-ten. That's what I was explaining in the analysis. In addition, it would not be consistent with policy one-four-four, ED policy one-four-four and one-six-two. Uh, there was also a public reliance factor from section Flu eight-two to consider, um, in which residents did not reasonably foresee or accommodate impacts previously uncontemplated for additional standalone multifamily residential densities and the impacts those could have on local parks, trails and other infrastructure. These factors are largely remedied by the inclusion of commercial office space in a mixed-use building. Mixed-use vertically integrated developments ultimately outperform single-use developments, and this is, um, uh, often identified in, uh, numerous planning literature and American Planning Association. Uh, previously, it was not consistent with the following LDC sections. And I've listed those out here, and what you see in red are the responses that one might have uh, to these particular sections, uh, of the land development code for the current applications for the, the planning commission today. So preservation of land use, uh, of land for employment is a legitimate public purpose, and maintaining the existing use is further as that public purpose. So preservation is maintained with the currently proposed project and now generates more jobs than previously proposed. Um, higher operational costs to the county was a factor that we were looking at. These are now offset by non-residential revenues. This is what I mean by making up the delta between, um, what was originally proposed as a standalone three hundred and twenty, uh, multifamily building to a mixed-use building. Potential strain on utilities and capacity, again, there is now an offset by non-residential revenues. Um, additional demands on larger district regional parks is not sufficiently mitigated by impact fees. These are now partial, these are now somewhat offset by non-residential revenues again. Um, as the twenty thousand square feet of uh, non-residential, uh, creates local tax impacts and revenues for, for the county. Additional seventy-six students in the school system, uh, this is still a factor with three hundred and twenty multifamilies still being present on the site. Um, but it should be noted that multifamily land uses do produce less impact to schools than single-family development. Nevertheless, the additional seventy-six students are not mitigated by the mixture with commercial office. Uh, existing commercial office uses do not do these things in the above, uh, bullets. Um, this is a fact, but the introduction of commercial retail office uses offsets the, the, a lot of these impacts, um, which is a goal of mixed-use development. And then the site has constraints that make it unsuitable for standalone multifamily development. Um, multifamily is still going to create impacts to the site. Clearly, there's a lot of site planning to be done. However, a parking garage has been committed with this project and is actually built into the, uh, economic analysis that was discussed. Uh, is a significant development feature of the new proposal, which, uh, mitigates and controls land use impacts associated with parking and traffic circulation through, from and into the site. You have a more controlled environment versus spread out surface parking lot. So there are three options, uh. Did it fall asleep? If you can advance the slide if you can. Thank you. There we go. So there are three, uh, options for recommendation for this. Um, the Planning and Development Department is identifying option one as the prevalent option, uh, to approve the project with conditions, uh, prove the, the vertically integrated mixed-use development with three hundred and twenty multifamily plus the twenty thousand square feet of commercial office retail, which is separate and different from the, uh, amenities that the apartment complex would provide. Uh, option two would be to deny the project, uh, and then option three would be to direct another course of action. I do have as part of this presentation, if you advance the slides, in case there is some discussion and we need to reference the comprehensive plan policies, the future land use and the economic development, plus the land development code sections that I referenced. Do you have those slides available for further discussion? That'll complete my presentation.
All right. Yes. Yeah.
Um, so Terry, first as a cleanup question. So typically when these items come to planning commission and the board, the agenda memo discusses any variations from the land development code that the applicant is seeking. And I recognize that in this one's unique because you were first recommending denial and then you switched it to approval. But somewhere in that switch, you didn't, neither you or the applicant appear to have identified any LDC variations that you're seeking. And it appears there's some variations being sought from parking and/or neighborhood parks. And so I guess what I'm asking for either you or the applicant to do is state what are those variations that are being sought with this application? And is staff recommending approval of them as being consistent with the intent of the code? Um, because the agenda memo doesn't say one way or another. Normally, when an MPUD comes through planning commission and the board, those are identified. And staff says why they're recommending approval of the variations. Again, I'm not blaming you because of the unique, this is a unique scenario where you went from denial to approval, but somehow during that transition, that got missed. And so I think to clean up the record, I think somebody, whether it's you or the applicant, need to state what are the variations that are being sought and then why, if you're recommending approval of them, why? Okay, so think about that while you sit down. Okay, so that's the first comment.
Let me take a seat and then I'll, I can come back.
So, and then my other comment or question relates to the REMI analysis because we got an email, the planning commission and all got an email from an individual claiming that the REMI analysis done by the applicant was flawed. Um, and I guess my question for you ha- is since the Office of Economic Growth did the original REMI analysis, have they seen or approved the new one, the revised one for the new proposal? Or was that only reviewed by planning? So I'm, I'm just asking how to, what process did it go through when the new one came in?
Yeah, I did have a discussion with OEG briefly about it. Um, I have to go back into my notes. I did review the REMI analysis both by OEG and, and the revised figures provided by the applicant. Um, and they seemed reasonable to me. But let me go back to my notes, uh, to double check the conversation that I had with OEG, and then I can give you a, a more direct answer on that one.
Well, if it was only you, did you review the argument that it was flawed or do you have any comment on that?
I, I haven't seen those emails. If, if they came in yesterday, I was out of pocket.
Came in yesterday to the planning commission. I think you were sent a copy of them as well. I, I just think somebody needs to address it, whether it's you or the applicant. There's an assertion that the new REMI analysis was flawed. I would feel more comfortable if our Office of Economic Growth had reviewed it and said it was consistent with their original analysis, but it sounds like they didn't. So I think somebody needs to address that assertion.
Let me take a seat and I'll, I'll.
And then the third question for you to think about while you sit down is it appears that your argument on schools, parks and libraries is that the that the non-residential uses, the vertically integrated non-residential uses will generate enough profit, so to speak, in terms of tax revenue to offset the what we're not getting for those facilities and impact fees. Is that effectively what you're arguing?
That's, yeah, that's the general argument.
So is there any math to back that up or you're just kind of, uh, just making that assumption that, that, that they'll, that they'll, that there'll be enough profit from tax, ad valorem profit from, I mean, I agree with you that commercial uses generate, I don't want to use the word profit, but they effectively are. They're, 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 they're generating far more taxes than they're consuming services, services. So it appears that you're arguing that that profit can be used to offset the loss. But is, I guess my question is, is that just an assumption or is you have math behind that?
I, I, I think there's some math behind it. Um, the, the exercise was to meet or beat what was originally analyzed as the economic development impact of a straight-up commercial office retail development. Uh, so that's identified in OEG twenty-one, uh, I forget the rest of the numbers of it, in the OEG memo that was attached to this application. Uh, and then of course, there, there was a revision on the number of the amount of square footages you could actually fit on that site, uh, down to sixty thousand. But still, the exercise was the same. How do you meet or beat the value that sixty thousand, straight sixty thousand, commercial office retail could, uh, would generate? And so, um, if we were okay with the, the, that being as the ceiling, the most economic value you can actually extract from that property, meeting that point or potentially even exceeding that, um, we considered it to be the, to be, to be sufficient at that point for it to have, um, the offsets necessary for the parks and the, uh, libraries and other systems. Because the, the, the overall impact was exceeding what, what a single-use economic value would have produced. Thanks.
The applicant has anything to add?
All right, before we start, uh, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Hi. No, we can't.
I just thought I asked.
Yeah, there, there are, there's like, I understand there's the handicap reviews.
Yeah.
But I don't know where, how they. Yeah, as you can tell, we're having, and I don't know why, audio issues are killing me. Said, yeah, of course.
When you get a chance, can you promote the best, best? Yeah, she's there. Can you promote?
Done. Now, hopefully. Hopefully I can get them to speak or be heard. I don't know. I, I don't.
Denise, this is Kristi Burrell. Are you able to hear me in the room? Brad, are you able to hear me on WebEx?
Christine, I can hear you.
I can hear you on WebEx.
Okay, but it sounds like maybe the roof can't hear us.
They, they may have shut it down because they're in recess.
Okay, I thought I heard Denise saying, hopefully we can get those people online to be able to hear. So I was just trying to test it in between. Okay.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not sure. If you want to text or, or email, uh, Denise, she may be able to you can hear, to work something out, do a test.
Okay, sounds good. I'll do that. Thanks, Brad.
See, that's just the opposite for me. I can hear, I can hear him just fine online. Test, test. Okay.
You didn't hear that in the room, did you?
Tests, there's nothing coming through in the room at all.
Craig, I got a, uh, an email from someone watching on YouTube that said they can hear us on YouTube as well. So the WebEx feed and YouTube, apparently you can hear.
Yeah, thanks, Brad. We're, what it is, we're having issues relaying the, the online volume in the room. So everybody online can hear fine, but we can't hear anybody from online here in the room.
We start over. This is Denise Hernandez. That please of the planning, I'm being told by the folks in W U F U S F.
One second, I can't, we're getting started, so everybody be quiet, please.
I'm being told by the U S F folks that they cannot hear the Planning Commission members very well. So if you would please speak closer into your microphones this way, please. Thank you. And we are using this mic on the left, so please speak into this mic on the left. Thank you.
Okay, before we get started with the applicant, I think, Chris, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that if Mr. Pitos could run us through the economic output comparison that is provided in the agenda pack, that might answer some of David's questions that that he brought up initially, but I'd like to just run through it anyway, to really understand that that particular document.
Barry? There you are.
David's to the the most current analysis that was done.
Yeah. I hear you.
Question about the I think it was parking in park. On your left, Terry.
Yeah, it's on two pages. Yeah, it was in portrait format, not landscape.
To a page number in the overall.
While we're looking it up, can I ask Mr. Williams a question?
Yes, please.
Relevant to one of the questions I asked. So the school impact fee that's currently being charged, is it, in your opinion, is it sufficient to mitigate school impacts? Or is it under, are we undercharging for schools, or are we, is it currently sufficient?
Well, traditionally, the impact fees are never a hundred percent of what the true impact is. And that goes for not just multifamily, but single family as well. I don't know what the.
I guess what I'm asking is, because I know the county recently increased.
Yes.
The reason I'm asking the question is because for parks and libraries, we know that we're undercharging for impacts. I'm asking you for schools. If we're, if we are undercharging by how much, I mean, you know, are we charging about what you need for to address the impact of schools?
Well, we have, I mean, that that was when we did the last update to our study. So remember, we phased it in over three years.
But it's not been fully phased in.
Correct.
So my question is, do you have any evidence that it's insufficient to meet the impacts of schools?
So I'd have to go back and read the study, but again, I'm saying that study was done about four years ago before the increases in construction and material costs, et cetera.
So it's possible it doesn't, because you've had increases in construction costs since then?
Oh, I would, I would for sure say that it's below. I just don't have a hard number of how much.
That answers my question.
As a point of order, I'm going to object to that. I don't know why Mr. Goldstein's headed down this path. That question certainly is not asked on any other zoning.
Excuse me, Joel, we're not ready for your testimony yet.
Well, but this is being done, Mr. Chairman.
Let's wait until, let's wait until we make your presentation.
It's entirely out of order.
Whatever you want.
It's out of order for him to be doing that, and for the record.
You're out of order right now.
Thank you.
Clear why I'm asking the question. Mr. Pitos's agenda memo has a statement about impacts to schools, parks and libraries. I'm just trying to figure out whether the impact fee does or does or not address those impacts. That's, it's really where the point of the question. It's directly relevant to what's in Mr. Pitos's memo.
And this is Niktarius Pito's Planning and Development Department. What's on the overhead is the original O E G. Part of the application package back in September, when this was being analyzed at that time. And so the it's hard for me to see from here. So the top analysis, let me see if I have it open. So the analysis is broken up into two parts. One that includes the construction phase and one that does not include the construction phase in order to you know, tally out certain values associated with construction. So they're both looking at three hundred and twenty multifamily apartments versus the commercial use entitlements that were on the property. And what this model indicated was that as a standalone use, the, in the, we're looking at the top table, that the standalone use would create one hundred and eighteen employment, jobs, personal income to the project presumably had about six point eight million. The out, the economic value or output of the of the site developed as three hundred and twenty multi three hundred and twenty unit multifamily apartments is about eighteen point five million dollars. The gross county product would be eleven point one million, and then there would be a county revenue over over the average of ten years of about four hundred and thirty one thousand seven hundred dollars. And then this was then compared against the current N P U D entitlements. So there you would have one hundred and sixty jobs generated at an income of eight point three million. The output would be greater at twenty point eight million. There would be a greater gross county product at twelve point nine million, and then county revenues at about six hundred and fifty four thousand. And the pattern continues in the bottom table in which the standalone commercial entitlements would outpace, significantly outpace, the standalone three hundred and twenty unit multifamily apartments. There's a delta there between the two as standalone uses. When, in the, in the, in the next tables that will show, and that was essentially what the O E G memo concluded. What the next tables will show, if you can go to the next attachment, now bring it up on my computer so I can see better. Yeah, the other one. This one's gonna be a little bit more difficult to see, so, because it was an Excel file that got turned into a PDF. So we'll have to be, we'll have to scroll down a little bit to capture all the columns as we move across them. But this was a an extrapolation from the O E G memorandum. And it's a similar comparison to what the O E G memo indicated at the top, so it's kind of summarizing what the deficits are or the deltas are between a standalone commercially entitled property and three hundred and twenty multi units standalone apartments. And this analysis indicates what that delta is, and so you can see they're short. A multifamily project would be short forty two jobs, would be short one point four million dollars, short two point three million in value added money, dollars. If you scroll down, you'll get the rest of the table. The output would be one point seven million short, and then there'd be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, five, two hundred and twenty, two thousand five hundred dollars in less county revenue as compared to the commercially entitled property. The revised proposal, which is, if you scroll back up now. Again, as I noted earlier, this was a comparison against a property developed at sixty thousand square feet standalone commercial as compared to a vertically integrated mixed use development of three hundred and twenty multifamily apartments plus twenty thousand square feet of commercial. And you can see the numbers change here in the comparison. We'll look at the total line for the, for the, hold on, Patty. I'm just illustrating where to look at right now is the line that says total across there, you'll, you'll notice that it would generate about one hundred and fifty five jobs as a mixed use development. Eight point eight million in income to the, to the project, twenty three million, twenty three point three million in value added. If you scroll down, you'll see the rest. The economic output is about fourteen point two million, and in total county revenues, it's five hundred and eighty three. When you compare that again, what's actually feasibly, can be actually built on the property, you'll look at the variance line and move across it, and you'll see that it generates actually forty four more jobs than a sixty thousand square foot development would produce. More personal, more personal income in terms of the development potential, so three million dollars there. Value added would be a difference of eight point eight more than if it was just standalone, eight point eight million more than if it was just standalone commercial. Five point one million in economic output more than if it was just standalone commercial and one hundred and twenty seven thousand point, one hundred and twenty seven thousand, four hundred and twenty one dollars more than if it was just standalone commercial. And so this is how, you know, when we looked at this information, which is extrapolated from the, from the O E G memo. It turned that, it turned out that as a mixed use building, it's generally more lucrative, or mixed use development, rather, it's generally more lucrative than any kind of standalone development might be, which is known in, in the planning world, that mixed, mixed use development tends to perform better than single use development. All right. That sort of walk through the, the memos there and the, and the data so that you can get a better sense of it.
So can I ask him a question?
Yes.
You wanna go first?
I, Terry, my only question, go back to the, going back to the O E G memo, what was the purpose of includes construction and does not include construction? Why was there two tables?
I think because construction values can influence a project initially. But when you're trying to average them out over ten years, it's not quite, construction happens once and then the building's there. So you're looking at the values with the construction phase and then the values without the construction phase.
What, what's more important from the planning world?
I think in, I think in the case of the memo, it's merely illustrating that in both instances, the currently commercially entitled property is more valuable than a standalone three hundred and twenty multi unit family. So it was merely to illustrate that no matter how you turned it, in that case, the commercial was outperforming the multifamily residential.
Should just straight up, the reason I was asking a question, I think, and all the, all the planning commission members up here got the same question, that the, the new memo or the new analysis did not include the, not, does not include construction phase. So that's why I'm trying to determine is that important or is it not important? I mean, it's a valid point. I don't see without construction here, but is that a valid question?
I, again, I think the, the main reason why it was included twice in this case was to illustrate that it was clearly outperforming in both scenarios. I don't know that, I don't think that it's necessarily important to focus on either one. It is merely there to illustrate the commercial standalone is outperforming in both instances, whether you take the construction or you don't, it's still outperforming.
Well, in reading the objection from the resident, it appears that was their objection, was the.
Well, yeah, and I don't know that we, I mean, it's not obvious to me that without construction, it is outperforming. But if you're saying it does, then that's my question.
David, do you have any?
I was just gonna ask the same question Mr. Girardi did, which is why the second analysis didn't have a no construction phase scenario and the first one did. Or a corollary to that would be, did staff look at it from a no construction, because it may be that even if you look at it from a no construction phase scenario, that the revised proposal still breaks even or comes out ahead, but we don't know because we don't have that analysis.
I think what's consistent, at least between the two documents is that in, in the sixty thousand, in the comparison against a sixty thousand square foot commercial development potential, it was talking about construction phase. So you, you could compare in this case, the, the two tables that talk about the construction phase specifically. And in that sense, it illustrates a, a nonperformance even with the construction impacts. So even if you were to take away the construction impacts, the expectation is that it's gonna be outperforming in some, in some categories. I think it also have in the agenda memo, just gotta pull it up really quick.
Did I answer your question?
Well, I mean, we get hung up on this for, for a long time and I don't know, that's necessarily the intent. I just, I'm trying to determine i- is a valid point made with the person's objection or not?
So in, in the agenda memo, I noted that in the stock analysis, the mixed use development fair is better, generating more employment, more personal income, more value added, more output and greater revenue. Though not illustrated in the attachment, if the mixed use development were compared against original maximum entitlement of 86,000 square feet, mixed use development would be short unemployment by five. And then the deficit in terms of county revenue generated by 70,360 dollars. The mixed use development would still outpace the personal income value added and economic output. So, uh, at least then, uh, in the agenda memo, at least I'm giving a comparison against the 86,000 square foot performance as well.
But is that comparison still with the, includes the construction phase?
Yeah, that would be with, with the construction phase analysis.
I guess the ultimate question is, did, did anybody do a similar analysis for a no construction phase included?
I, I did not do the non-construction phase. We can ask the, the developer or the development team if they, if they did.
And I guess let me, I'm asked a somewhat related but unrelated question. The eight minutes, and the one that includes the construction phase looks like it's a value added of 8,823,160. Does anybody know how much that helps us in terms of ad valorem revenue? Like what the, the ad valorem benefit is of that much value added? Cause it probably equates to some ad valorem dollar amount, right? Well. Currently the applicant does is what I'm hearing. Okay. The reason I'm asking is because it relates to my prior question, which is how much additional taxes are we getting and is that enough to kind of offset what we're not getting for park impact fees, library impact fees, and maybe schools that, because, cause let me just start, I guess my, what I'm saying is I agree with the general premise that commercial generates a profit for the school system, the libraries and parks. We get a pro, a profit off of that. I'm just trying to figure out whether anybody's done the math of how much profit we're getting. And is that enough to offset what we're not getting in the impact fee? That was my question. Maybe somebody can answer it. So.
So in response to Mr. Goldstein's question, so I, I looked it up. And so back when the impact fee was, the increase in the impact fee was approved back in 2017. The impact fee where we are today is 92% of what the full impact fee was to be calculated in 2017.
So the impact fee is about 8% short.
Correct.
From what your true cost is.
Correct. But again, not, not, not looking at what's happened in the last four years and all that stuff. But back, back of 2017, it was.
And so it's, so definitely less short than we are in park impact fees. Cause park impact fees, I think Keith told me were less than 50% of what we should be charging.
Correct.
And libraries is probably similar. So.
So certainly with the approval of the raise in impact fees back in 2017, we got a lot closer. Yeah. But we're still short.
And the root of my question was, since we appear to be short on those things, I was just trying to figure out, is there enough ad valorem revenue coming in from this new proposal to kind of offset what we're short? And hopefully somebody can answer that at some point. But anyway, go ahead. Sorry.
Anything else from Terry? No? Okay. We'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Joel, to, to an associate's land use counsel for the applicant, and I have been sworn. Uh, we're going to divide the presentation among our expert team. I do represent Stock Development Company along with Hype Design, our planning experts. Links and Associates, our transportation experts, and John Burns Real Estate Consulting, our market experts. Mr. Petos explained, this is a rehearing upon remand from the BCC regarding the planning commission's prior September 9 hearing due to a failure to advertise in the newspaper by the planning department. However, the property was properly posted and the direct mail notices were sent by the applicant just to clarify that it was simply the newspaper ad that didn't get placed inadvertently by staff. This matter has not yet been heard by the county commission. Uh, it was heard by your planning commission, but one member was absent on September 9th. And two of you heard the testimony, but due to unavoidable personal conflicts had to leave prior to any motion and any action. So three of you did not participate in the prior decision. In the three months since that first planning commission hearing, the applicant and the PDD staff have agreed to a modification of the request. And in fact, if you went back and looked at your prior agenda memorandum for the September 9 hearing, you'll recall that staff recommended denial. But then in alternative motion number one, they actually recommended that you consider approval if the applicant could do a vertical mixed use project and retain some measure of the retail office component along with the apartments. So during the three month hiatus, we went back and reviewed that. Current market conditions, as you all know, are extremely favorable, probably more favorable than they've ever been in this sector. They re-crunched the math and they determined that in fact, they do believe that they have a reasonable chance that they can make some measure of retail or office mix with the apartments work at this location. And they're willing to give it a go. Consequently, we worked that out. We agreed to all the conditions of approval that are set forth in your package. And PDD staff, as you heard, they now recommend approval for the application as modified to include the 320 multifamily units and not less than 20,000 square feet of retail or office uses asset forth in those conditions. We have a little bit of housekeeping I would like to do, uh, with your permission, Mr. Chairman. I need to introduce some documents in the record. Um, I'm in a little bit of a procedural quandary, so I want to reintroduce the prior index of documents that you actually received and filed at the prior hearing. But because of the advertising defect, I want to make sure they're in the record, uh, for this case.
Sure.
To be clear, could you just do a motion to receive and file the prior record so we can?
Make a motion to receive and file.
Second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. I've also provided the transcript from the prior hearing of the testimony because it's my desire not to repeat all of the base testimony. And I'd like to have that received into it. We have the actual court reporter's transcript that I provided to the clerk.
Do we have a motion to receive?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, the third item is we have a very small supplemental index of documents that pertain to the modified proposal that were not in the prior binder. I provided those to Mr. Petos and the clerk, and I have a copy for the board if you would see fit to introduce that.
Okay. I have a motion.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joel, since this is new, what can you summarize what's in this new binder?
Yes, e- everything that's in the binder was in your agenda package with one exception. And that is the very last item, which are BCC adopted, uh, ordinance and resolution, which I will explain in my presentation and I'll direct you to those last two items.
Okay.
Everything else is in the package. This is just a succinct grouping of the items that are particularly relevant now. Many to the questions you've already asked of Mr. Petos related to the mixed use modification. So that you don't necessarily have to go through the prior three inch binder.
Okay.
With that said, uh, I'm going to, to do our brief presentation, uh, in my case and turn it over. And then I'm going to come back at the end of our presentation and do my best to help address Mr. Goldstein's questions and the other questions, but to try to keep a sense of order here before we get to those questions. In terms of entitlement background, just to remind you and summarize from the prior hearing, Seven Oaks DRI and MPUD already includes vested entitlements for parcel S19. And they already authorized a loom conversion of retail square feet previously allocated to parcel S19. Only a portion of the previously allocated retail on parcel S19 is needed under the loom conversion to arrive at the 320 multifamily units. We gave you that math calculation last hearing. It's in the original binder, but it only takes a portion to achieve 320 multifamily. Moreover, the remaining retail square feet you then have easily covers the 20,000 square feet of retail office that we're now willing to add to the multifamily. So there's no question about the pre-existing vested entitlements under the MPUD. Now I am going to digress here because I believe this goes to one of Mr. Goldstein's points. I understand all the questions about whether impact fees in the county really cover the costs. You can make that argument and ask that question in every single zoning that ever comes before you. So on every retail, every multifamily, every office, in every one of those cases, you could say, well, wait a minute, we can't approve this development. Our impact fees don't cover that cost. Well, then modify your impact fee ordinance to cover the cost. But I submit that's not an appropriate question, and that's why I objected. That's not an appropriate question to ask in an individual zoning. That may be a great question to ask at a board meeting when you're setting impact fees. But not to deny zoning. Your, your ordinance is what it is and everyone has to buy by. Importantly, in going to this vertical mixed use option, every project I've had in the last two or three years that had multifamily units, the staff and the BCC have begged my clients to agree to do vertical mixed use. They beg for everyone to do it. No one will ever do it. The irony here is this developer, first time they've ever come to Pasco County, as you remember, they are now agreeing to do that which the board and the staff repeatedly beg people to do. And yet we're going to have a discussion about the exact economic numbers, whether it's good or bad. We're going to nitpick the analysis.
Oh, hold, hold on. Okay. Let me just make sure you understand, and I think you already do understand. As chairman, I am allowed to hear any question from any member of this, of this board at any point. So don't stand there and question who we can ask, what questions we can ask, or who, who can receive them from. Let's stick to the point, make your presentation on the property, let's get through it.
Well, I understand that, Mr. Chairman, but my point is I am entitled to say that that question or that answer is not relevant.
You've already said that. So let's move on.
I want to make it clear. Okay. As to the mixed use configuration, the BCC has long supported multifamily use in a mixed use configuration. And in fact, this is evidenced by the board's 2020 policy memorandum from last June regarding multifamily locational and design criteria. And one of the last two items, Mr. Chairman, in the binder I gave you is a copy of that policy memorandum that was officially adopted by the board that officially said that multifamily projects should be in a mixed use setting. It even contemplated them in what we call a horizontal mixed use setting where they are mixed with retail and office in a project. More importantly, in the very recent this year, ordinance 21-07 in May of this year, 2021, this commission recommended and the board approved a change in the C2 conditional use ordinance, which you probably will recall that you could no longer automatically seek multifamily as a conditional use in a C2 commercial zone. And the planning commission recommended approval of that change and the board adopted ordinance 21-07 this past May. In that ordinance, which I included as the second item at the end that I mentioned in the today's index, in that binder, it expressly cars out and says that multifamily in a vertical mixed use is allowed. In other words, they exempted that from the new prohibition and express acknowledgement that when they were trying to disfavor multifamily, they did not mean that to include multifamily in a vertical mixed use configuration. So it's our position that what we're proposing to do today, which was requested by staff in the prior agenda memorandum, is directly supported by existing BCC policy, which tells us that multifamily in a vertical mixed use setting is in fact favored, not disfavored. And finally, I want to summarize briefly as discussed at the prior PC hearing. Number one, the DRI has been approved and the entitlements vested for decades. Number two, the DRI and MPUD allow 1,726 multifamily units in total. 1,726. Only 558 of those multifamily units to date have been constructed within Seven Oaks. Therefore, if we convert the retail to 320 units, there still will only be 878 multifamily units in an MPUD already approved for 1,726, which is only 50.8% of the labo units. So again, this is partially the answer to Mr. Goldstein's point about, has anybody analyzed impacts on schools, libraries, parks? The short answer is yes. The MPUD was based upon vested impacts for 1,726 units. So that analysis has already been done for the 320.
Joel, can I do a clarification question on that? So. But do we, do you know how many the original developer, I mean, cause some of those multifamily units could have been sold to other parcels in the MPUD or DRI? Did then that leftover number you're talking about, does it take into account what the original developer sold to other parcels in the DRI and MPUD?
It takes into account exactly how many are approved and vested in the MPUD and how many in fact are constructed. Okay. And we have the right to the next 320 to go construct. So again, we are asking for already approved vested analyzed units. This is not a new impact.
Okay. My, my question though is, if that were the case, then why do you even need to convert at all?
Because under the master plan, as you know, we have retail allocated to S19. And we have to convert our retail to remain trip neutral to the multifamily units, which the loom allows, which has been done over 15 times as testified to by the planning and development department, I believe Ms. Hernandez at the last hearing. And the county has never rejected or objected to the automatic loom conversion.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not asking about the conversion. I'm asking, was your client assigned retail entitlements or multifamily entitlements?
Well, you know, you know, the answer to that, it's what's on the parcel. It runs with the parcel. It has retail as primary. Office is secondary, but the approved MPUD and DRI expressly allow us to trade that for multifamily.
And I'm not actually arguing or questioning the conversion that you're requesting.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm asking about, you're saying that there was these, all these multifamily entitlements out there that you could use. My question is, is there enough left over once the other multifamily parcels use them?
That answer is yes, because many of those parcels have already converted to retail or other uses. So in fact, the ones that are designated for multifamily use, there still are enough entitlements for all of them to be developed. there still are enough entitlements for all of them to be developed. And in fact, it appears likely it will never be developed at the full one thousand seven hundred twenty six multifamily.
You're saying that even assuming all the other multifamily gets developed, there's still three twenty left over?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
That was my question. Okay.
As I just stated, point number four is we, in our opinion, we have legally invoked the loom conversion as a matter of right. I sent that notice to P D D months ago, and we believe we have the right to do it. And as I said, point five, the county has administratively approved over fifteen of these loom conversions within Seven Oaks and has never once objected, never challenged it. They've approved every one administratively. So again, this urbanized infill location is the comp plan poster child for a vertically mixed use project. I don't know why. That's not clear. It should have been clear from the beginning, but this is positioned exactly as the county's adopted comp plan goals and policies say one should do. And with all respect, and I'm not trying to antagonize anyone, but to deny this modified request for the vertical mixed use project that P D D asked at the last hearing for us to do and which the board policy says is the board's policy, to deny that under these circumstances, in our opinion, would be arbitrary and capricious. And we respectfully urge you to please recommend approval as modified. I'm going to turn this over to my client, Keith Gelder, the principal at Stock Development, to actually explain the project to you. So hopefully we can focus on what is being offered and what it will look like and what it can do for the community and get beyond some of these logistical issues. Thank you.
Joel, before you leave, is somebody else going to address my question about the variation requests?
I'm coming back to that after they present.
Okay.
I'm trying not to disrupt our presentation.
That's fine. I just want to make sure you were going to address it later. Go ahead.
I promise we'll get those after the two presenters, three presenters. Thank you.
Can we get the PowerPoint, please? Figure out how to make this clicker work. Good afternoon. Keith Gelder with Stock Development. We're the applicant for the property. I have been sworn. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Unfortunately, I was not able to present in person last time due to COVID. So I'm happy to share this presentation with you. Just wanted to touch briefly about our company and who we are. I covered a lot of this in the last presentation. Many of this imagery on our projects is located in your, in your packets, so I'll just be brief. But again, I wanted to just remind you who we are, what we build, and that we bring, we build a high quality product. Our, our company's been in business since two thousand and one. We've built over six thousand units of all product types, so the state of Florida, single family, multifamily, townhomes, apartments, and condos throughout the state. We have active projects all up and down the west coast of Florida. We are based in Naples. This will be our first project in Pasco. Here, I'll just flip through some imagery of completed projects and proposed, just to give you a flavor of what we build. Again, very high quality, lifestyle-driven projects. We build large clubhouses, you know, filled with beautiful amenities. We put golf simulators, we put bowling alleys, we put catering kitchens, group fitness, yoga, spin facilities, resort-style pools. You know, our, our clubhouses have volume ceilings. A recently completed clubhouse with a forty-foot tall entry foyer in the great room. These are more imagery of our completed pool areas, outdoor gaming, pool cabanas, grilling stations to really promote outdoor lifestyle living. And then again, more of the same. So as, as Joel mentioned, since, since we were last here, we've worked really hard to re-concept the project, comply with staff's recommendation to incorporate mixed use. We, we surveyed the market. We met with brokers. We reviewed our product design. We looked at our construction costs. We toured several projects, and when we looked at other projects for inspiration throughout the country, primarily in Florida. Here are four examples. These are all, you know, this is an urban, urban style. When people say vertical mixed use, this is, this is what it looks like. You know, so we took a lot of, a lot of time to do our due diligence to look at product types and review the marketability of, of this concept.
Can I ask you a question? So what are, what are some examples of like the retailer office that you have and these other projects? Like, what type of retail office are you putting in them?
Oh, so this, none of these are our proposed project. I was simply showing you these to show, this is what, this is what first floor commercial with residential above looks like.
But did you do these projects or no?
I'm sorry. No, these, these are all, these are all just representative samples.
Oh, okay, okay. So you didn't do these. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you did. Okay.
So, you know, as, as we envision the concept for this product and as it continues to evolve, the top left is an earlier sort of watercolor sketch that we did, which has evolved a little bit, but sort of represents the design intent for the property. The bottom right was one project in particular that I came across recently that I felt was very consistent with the vision that we have for this property. In particular, this, the lower right, the project is Ellington at Oviedo Park, just outside of Orlando. It's very comparable to, to our property in very, in many ways. It's in a suburban location. It's integrated with neighborhood retail. It's four-story product. Has ground floor retail. This particular project has twelve thousand. Has beautiful, beautiful architecture design and attractive landscaping, all of which, you know, we intend to do and is consistent with the type of product that we build. Here's, here's an updated site plan. Again, as this has all moved very quickly, so this is a updated site plan of, of, of the site itself. So you've got, the northern building has remained largely the same under the prior concept. The southern building has undergone the biggest change. That building is where we intend to incorporate the twenty thousand square feet of first floor retail. And the other big change is going from surface parking to a parking garage. Obviously, that's a big cost implication. Parking garages are not inexpensive. You know, we've reviewed the numbers. We believe we can make the economics work. We think it works in this type of setting. It services dual purpose. It serves us both, both the retail and the residential. And in addition to that, I've highlighted the blue on-street parking, which all the parking on all three drive aisles was reviewed, previously reviewed and approved by staff. These spaces in particular are angled parking. One good thing about this parking configuration specifically is it provides an element of traffic calming, right? People generally slow down, and it helps reduce pedestrian conflicts throughout the project. So in the upper right is a rendering of what that looks like. That is looking eastward down towards the Sam's Club parking lot, and you could see to layer in the streets, the streetscape, street trees and landscaping. It's a beautiful end product.
Can I ask you a question about your parking garage? Is that available for just the residents of your complex? Or can anybody who wants to shop at the shops or say Sam's Club or somewhere else park in that parking garage?
Yeah, so the programming obviously hasn't been fully defined, but typically what you'll find in a setting like this is the first floor is typically open to the public or the residents on a first come, first served basis. And the floors above are typically access controlled to the residential own. So the, the sum of, I guess, the first floor of the parking garage and the on-street spaces is more than sufficient to support the retail.
If this were approved, would you be okay with the condition that the first floor be available, publicly available?
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate. I, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
So this, this slide shows our pedestrian connectivity and all the sidewalks we have planned, but I also want to highlight we're making no changes to any of the access points or drive aisles. So everything that you see today that exists in terms of drive aisles will remain. So I think that's an important distinction. Also, the blue shows all the proposed sidewalks, and you, you could see it's a pretty extensive sidewalk, you know, pathway network that connects, you know, it, it completes the shopping center. It connects to H and Oaks Boulevard in the west. It provides accessibility to the sidewalks along fifty six and the bus stop on fifty six, and also connects to all the existing pathways that are already in place to serve and access the Sam's Club storefront as well. The next couple of slides are, are just on the right, again, just quick renderings of each of the drive aisles, just to help give you an idea. You know, once, once this landscape and the buildings are in place, you know, what you can expect to see on all three drive aisles. Similarly, to the south, obviously you have a large, larger retention bond to the west. And then you have, that's the, the southern access drive aisle between the project and the existing owl parcels. Here's a quick sketch of, of some of the, the neighborhood park summary. That was, that was one of the items that's in the conditions of approvals to answer your prior question. There is approved deviations in there with specific language and what meets the requirements. Here are the proposed locations based on the new concept plan of how we're, how we're getting there. And here's just some quick renderings, just to show you, you know, the lifestyle of what we envision for kind of pool area for the residential in the north. And then similarly, just quick renderings of the green space. So in the northwest portion of the project, we plan a dog park shown in the top right. And lower left shows, you know, an image of the, it'll be interior green space now and well landscaped for outdoor amenities. So I had some information in here on the fiscal impact analysis that was touched on earlier. I think we, we covered that in pretty good detail. The only thing I want to add to that is, in terms of the eighty-six thousand original number that was presented in the original analysis, I think the market has pretty much spoken that big box entitlements retail are really not feasible in this Amazon-driven market. So specifically, it's been fifteen years since that Sam Club, Sam's Club was built. Those properties have been actively listed for five years prior to us putting in our contract. Both brokers have provided letters, which should be in your supplemental binder, attesting to the fact that there is, there has been no interest in, in pursuing those big box retail entitlements. So that is, that supports our rationale and reasoning why we don't think that level of intensity is really feasible in today's market. We have engaged Acre Commercial Real Estate. They're a professional commercial leasing firm. They have offices in Tampa and Orlando, have extensive experience in mix, vertical mixed use specifically, projects in Tampa and Orlando. Our company as well has experience in horizontal and mixed use properties. So I just wanted to share that with you as well. This slide answers one of the prior questions about the advarum tax revenue. So I, I just want to hit on that. So I, I provided this slide specifically because I pulled every single tax bill for the last six new construction properties in Pasco County. So I'd be happy to pull all those tax bills and submit them as part of our supplemental record. Those are the, those are the twenty twenty, I believe. We, we prepared this before the new ones, I think, came out. So when you average those out for three hundred and twenty units, it's, it's eight hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. And that, those are real numbers. They're not, they're not the R E M I numbers. They're not some other calculation. That's what you're actually billing these projects, and that's what we would pay for our project. Actually, that's probably light because there's an additional twenty thousand of retail that would be on top of that value. So similarly, actually, I want to go back just, just one slide. One other item I wanted to notice, if you pull the tax bill for the adjacent Sam's Club, that building's a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet, they're, they contributed three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars last year, and our project's going to generate over eight hundred and fifty thousand. So you can debate the R E M I numbers all day long. Those are the real tax bills. Be happy to pull them all and verify them, but that shows the difference in what we're going to contribute versus the commercial alternative. Similarly, on impact fees, again, this is not updated for the additional twenty thousand square feet, but here, three million dollars is what this project will contribute in impact fees. So, and if you wanted to look at parks specifically, I think when you look at, oh, I'm sorry, schools, the eighteen seventy-three times three hundred and twenty, I think that rounds out to, somebody do the math. A significant number. So I just, just.
Can I give you a piece of advice? Some of these fees are now higher than what you have here.
Much higher.
You need to prob, if I were you, you'd ask your consultant to update these numbers to deal with the fact that some of the fees are higher and the fact that, and to include the twenty thousand square feet. I, I think you're not helping your case anybody not including current fees or the amount for the twenty thousand of retail office. I mean, office doesn't pay impact fees, but retail does. I just, I know these fees are low, and I think even the school number is low.
Oh, the, the school is forty-eight eighty-four for you.
Immobility has been, has gone up significantly since that number, so you need to update your numbers.
Be happy to pay you more money.
No, Joel claims, even though, even though, even though Joel claims these numbers are irrelevant, you have them in your presentation, which somewhat destroys his relevance argument. So, but you should be using current numbers.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, on top of that, if I'm not.
And I want to say the same thing about your advarum is, is you should be putting in your, you, you only put the apartments in there. You should be putting in whatever the retail and office will generate.
Absolutely. We will, we will definitely incorporate that.
Not blaming you. I'm blaming whoever presented this or prepared this. Maybe it was you. I don't know.
It was me. I can, I can't blame anyone in my office, so. I was focusing on the economics of this concept, so.
I, I'm just saying, if you're going to focus on economics, you should use current numbers. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. Well, if that wasn't enough, we have additional obligations. We'll be contributing four hundred thirty thousand dollars to repayment of C D D debt for the master infrastructure for Seven Oaks. And in addition to that, we'll be contributing a hundred thousand dollars per year towards the operation and maintenance of Seven Oak C D. Oops.
Are you, are you done? I was asking you a question, but maybe if you're not done, go ahead. Sorry.
I was just going to close. We build great product. We're really excited about this project. You know, we found a way to, to make vertical mixed use work. We think we will come up with a great design. We've come up with some great concepts. Again, this, this project or this property has remained vacant for fifteen years. So, you know, I think through this creativity and this project, I think we, we can, we can add a beautiful project to contribute to Pasco County tax base. We think it's a highest and best use. We think our company has experience and capabilities to execute it. So thank you for letting me share my vision. Looking forward to bringing this project to fruition.
I can, yeah, one more question. So the condition, you showed a parking deck in your graphic, but then the actual written conditions say structured parking is also allowed but shall not be required. You know why it says that? I mean, do you think you can meet your parking requirements without a parking deck?
No, I imagine it was probably left in there for, for the flexibility, but I, I believe it will be needed to provide sufficient parking, so.
So would you have any objection to that being changed to structure and parking shall be provided?
No, no objection.
And so, and I guess the follow-up to that is, do you think with the deck, do you still need a parking variation from the code or is that going to? Is the only, I'm trying to figure out what variation you're seeking on parking. Is it, once you build the deck, is it just that you don't want to have to provide additional spaces for the retail and office? Or are you also seeking a deviation for the number of units?
Joel, too, can I take a crack at that? Because I talked to Terry about this. The prior parking requirements of one point five for one bedroom, two point oh space per unit for a two or three bedroom is exactly what's been approved uniformly on all the multifamily projects. And that's why we requested it here and staff agreed.
That, that is a variation.
That is a variation, and in, in the, in the application narrative, I, I can appreciate it's not in your agenda item, but in the application narrative, it's fairly clearly, it's very clearly spelled out with all the justifications we've given in every one of those. And in the staff review comments, they agreed that that was sufficient and it was consistent with the prior alternative standards, and the, and the staff actually wrote the condition for the parking that we've put in the conditions. That's number one. That's number one. The discussion Terry and I had is because Keith hasn't had a chance for the architect to specifically design it. We know it's going to require structured parking just because of the physical requirement to get both 20,000 square feet and the units on the space. So it's going to have to go structured. We would like to keep the minimum parking requirement at what was approved for the apartments for the simple reason that in the mixed use setting, with the pedestrian-friendly nature of the internal capture, and more importantly, the fact that most of the retail office visitors will be there when the residents are off at work, that for the most part, there's a symbiotic relationship on those spaces. He undoubtedly will probably have more onsite now with the structured parking, but because we don't have a number, we would appreciate it if the minimum stayed what staff's approved. But like Keith said, he's okay with saying that the structured parking shall be provided. So that way.
So you'd be okay if that was revised to say structured parking shall be required and the first floor shall be publicly available?
Correct. No question, that's, that's the way to do these projects. We're happy to do that.
I, I do think it's relevant because if you're not providing any parking for the retail and office, that would be problematic if the entire deck was exclusively for the residents.
Yeah, and there was no intention of making the entire deck. Like Keith said, it's almost become customary now that you typically have the first floor that is accessible to public. And then you, and, and then the guests, the residential guests also can use it, which helps with parking. And then you create your exclusivity and your security for your residents by simply putting the key pass on the second floor so that only the residents, you know, just like in a private condo in an urban setting, only the residents can get past that first level. So we're happy with those changes.
That answers my question, thank you.
Keith's finished? Steve Henry, Steve Henry's going to briefly address the access because I know that Mr. Anderson had a question about the drive-through aisle last hearing. He's going to try to clear that up.
I'm not Christie Barrera, something like. Okay, there we go. Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa, 33607, and I have been sworn. Well, we've been involved with Seven Oaks for more than 20 years. We in fact did the original phase two analysis for this project. The subject parcel that we're talking about today, S19, was actually allocated 400,000 square feet in that original analysis. This parcel now, what is left is about 119,522 square feet. And what we have done is then used the matrix to convert that to the 320 apartments. And obviously, we're leaving the 20,000 square feet of retail. What this graphic here shows the comparison of what the current 119,522 square feet is allocated under the original analysis that was done for the parcel in comparison to the multifamily and the retail that is part of the project. So this, these figures have been updated to include both the multifamily and retail. And as you can see, the original retail was 424, it is now 206. So there's a significant reduction in the traffic that was actually analyzed and the external improvements were mitigated for and constructed to accommodate. In addition, we have used the loom, again, been the traffic engineer on this project. We've done virtually every parcel within Seven Oaks and have used the matrix numerous times to trade from retail to multifamily, multifamily to other uses within, within the parcel. One of the things that came up last time was the parking along the drive aisles and the concern there. And I've got, Diane's going to hand out some graphics. What, what we have done is, when you look at that, I want to make sure that's okay if we can hand out some examples. So what, what we've got here, she's going to hand it back to you.
Before you go any further, we have a motion receiving file.
Motion receiving file?
Second.
Other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So what we've got is on the south side of the building, on the southern drive aisle, which is a right-in, right-out to Ancient Oaks Boulevard, we're going to have some parallel parking. And in a, you know, mixed use development, that type of parking is very common. And what we've got here, and actually, we're just handing out, is actually Longleaf. When you look at Longleaf, their main entrance and their retail, ground-level retail and residential has on-street parking, has parallel parking. And then in addition to that, the next drive aisle up, which is the full access that goes in, that's going to have, as Mr. Gildner indicated, is going to have angled parking. And what I've included in the package there is the West Chase. West Chase is a very successful mixed-use T and D development in Tampa. And that particular one that I have given is the main access. It actually has a signal that goes to Lineball Avenue into West Chase. That also has angled parking, it has ground-level retail, it has sidewalks adjacent to the retail, exactly what we are proposing here. So there's no difference from that. And in the rear, we've got the 90-degree parking that's there. That one, we've done the counts out there, that's a very low-volume driveway. That's the rear of the Sam's. We only counted, when we did the counts, we counted 26 cars during the peak hour. So it's a very low-volume driveway, and we'd expect that from our standpoint, because of the parking garage and where the retail is, obviously, that most of the traffic's going to be on that main drive aisle. But again, when you look at these types of facilities, that is expected, these T and Ds, and that's kind of what you want is from a pedestrian standpoint, a traffic standpoint, is to have that traffic calming effect is what these do. So that concludes my presentation, unless you've got any questions.
I have one question, Steve. So the two examples you gave, West Chase and Longleaf, I'm familiar with both of them, but neither one of them has a Sam's Club kind of right in the middle of it. Do you think, do you still think your parking configuration can work next to a Sam's Club?
Yes, we've done the counts out there, we know what the volumes are, and the answer is yes. That the volumes are not that significant going in and out of there, that that would not function adequately, yes. In fact, I would, I would suspect that West Chase probably has significantly more traffic on their driveway than this driveway does. It, that is their main entrance, that is their signal to get in and out there. This is obviously a, it's a full access, but it is not the main access. And so from that standpoint, I don't, I believe that West Chase would actually have more traffic than what we have counted on this, and we've counted this driveway numerous times over the years.
Any other questions for Mr. Henry?
No. And, and just Mr. Two is saying, there are multiple accesses to that retail development. This is not the only access to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to go to Leslie Deutsch next, our market consultant, who is via WebEx, and I know there's some logistics, but while they're getting that teed up, if I may, to get back to Mr. Goldstein's point, and I just reviewed this with Ms. Hernandez, in the applicant, is application in our narrative, we do specifically spell out the neighborhood park alternative standard based on what has been done in other multifamily projects. And in fact, if you go into Acela, into the Parks and Recreation Review Comments, they did their analysis, they found it met the intent of the code and consistent with their prior waivers. And they provided us the exact approval verbiage that we put in the conditions. Similarly, the onsite parking, the, the parking spaces on the drive aisles, the size of the parking spaces, all was specifically set forth in the application narrative as waivers. And they were reviewed and analyzed in Acela in the review comments. So I guess my suggestion would be is if you do see fit to recommend approval, including those alternative standards or those waivers, it'll be very easy for P D D to simply go into the existing file, extract that, amend the agenda memo going to the board so that they have the justification points on each of those waivers to David's point. It's in the record, it just was not pulled and put in your agenda memo, probably for the reason David said, that originally there was a recommendation for denial, then the approval. And to be honest with you, we've all been moving pretty quickly to get here today with everything else, you know, that's on everyone's plate. So it is in the record, and Denise has looked at that and confirmed that. If you have any questions on that point. And with that said, do we have Ms. Deutsch? I think she's going to have to do it the same way you did the prior.
Joel, can I ask you a question because it's getting late? Ms. Deutsch gave a pretty lengthy presentation at the last planning commission meeting. Do you have anything new to add from her last presentation? Because I, I mean, I'm not sure we all really need to hear from her again.
We're happy to not, we're happy to have her not present. If there's anyone on the commission that would like to hear the market analysis, again, we can do it. If they're comfortable on that particular aspect, we're happy to waive it. It was in the record before, and as I said, we've introduced the transcript now from the court reporter, so technically, it's in the file. But we're happy to not waste your.
Saying, that's why I asked, does she have anything new to add from her last one?
No, it, it, that was the last update that had been prepared.
Well, it's up to the planning commission, but you've already incorporated everything she said before. So unless you really want to hear it again, you don't have to.
Yeah, I think there's no reason to hear it.
The only one didn't hear was Mr. Girardi, and I don't. Okay, all right, okay, he was watching, okay, so.
Well, we're happy to waive that, thank you. And just my couple of concluding points, we're actually going to finish 15 minutes ahead of our allotted time, I'm happy to say. But back to Mr. Goldstein's original points, the parking in parks issues, I think we've covered that, that it is in the Acela file, it's in the record. And if you see fit to move this forward, then P D D can get that updated in the agenda for the B C C. As to the R E M I model, I just wanted to discuss that briefly. I haven't seen the letter that you apparently got from some resident questioning that, but I just wanted to explain how we did that at, at P D D's request. We accepted David Engels' model and his math that had been presented to you at the prior hearing. We accepted that. We simply took that on a per-square-foot basis and did a straight mathematical extrapolation of per-square-foot, which is the way the model does it. And we simply calculated, let me back up. He had a figure for the 320 apartments, we took that, didn't change it. He had a figure for 86,000 square feet. We simply took his per-square-foot number for the 86,000, reduced it to 20,000, and added that impact to the residential. So it's just a straight mathematical extrapolation, no, no voodoo, nobody fiddled with the model, nobody changed the model, no one reran the model. We just did a mathematical extrapolation to it. So that's how the numbers were arrived at. The reason we consolidated and presented the combined impact of construction impact, which is temporary but substantial, and the permanent impact, which is forever, is because common sense tells us that both are impacts, both are positive economic impacts. So why would you not analyze? We analyzed the total impact of retail and the total impact of mixed use. And the point is that under both scenarios, the total impact of mixed use is greater in every single category. So that's why it was done that way. And then lastly, the R E M I model, to my knowledge, really doesn't factor in that direct ad valorem tax bill, okay? It, it's a different economic engine it analyzes. But as Keith pointed out, he pulled the last six multifamily projects completed, CO'd, and assessed by the tax collector and bill sent. So the numbers he's giving you are the actual numbers to which David is right. We need to add the 20,000 square feet of retail, it'll be an even bigger number. So the point is, we're going to generate a million a year in forever ad valorem taxes. So I haven't had any other multifamily project that ever had to analyze economic impact, just being honest with you. The six or eight that have been approved this calendar year that came through here and got approved by the board, none of them had to analyze economic impact. For some reason, we've had to analyze the economic impact, and the mixed-use solution still produces the most positive economic impact. So for all these reasons, we would greatly appreciate your agreeing with the current staff recommendation, recommending approval with the requested waivers that are set forth in the application narrative and forwarding this to the commission. And thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak with questions or objections? Okay, if you want us to come forward and state your name and address and your concerns? And have you been sworn?
Yes, sir. I have been sworn in, John Tomsoo, J O N T O M S U, Chief Coordinator, Seven Oaks Resident Council, 26738 Wingdell Drive, Wesley Chapel, Florida, 33544. Good afternoon, Merry Christmas. Thank you for the additional time, it's a wonderful birthday present. I know that you are all here to be the gatekeepers for sound decisions related to planning and development opportunities for the citizens and landowners of Pasco County and making recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. I also know that the applicant and their representatives will do and say everything and anything in order to get this deal done. The applicant is not the landowner, Dave Bartelo and Walmart are the landowners for these two parcels. The applicant has no ties to our county or community, and their sole driver is financial gain and a reference for future development opportunities. Misinformation, half-truths, and liberal interpretation of the policies, laws, and guidelines are the primary tools this applicant uses to convince you that the rezoning in this area is a good idea. On September 9th, Mr. Two pointed out that there were no sites in Seven Oaks for sale to build apartments. This is inaccurate. Sites N2A and N2B are designated primary use multifamily and are for sale. Mr. Two also indicated that there are many examples of loom conversions to multifamily. I'm unable to find any evidence of this. Prior loom conversions were to support more commercial entitlements. Mr. Two's reference to routinely granted park waivers holds little merit when the new development north of Seven Oaks has planned for excessive parks and amenities for those future residents. Specific to parks, the applicant, applicant's designs are false and cannot support the dog park. The area is currently a storm runoff and drainage, you cannot do backfill. Mr. Two and Mr. Henry, the traffic engineer, indicated that 320 apartments will produce fewer peak hour trips than commercial. When I requested the traffic study referenced by the applicant, I was assuming actual data was collected and an investigation in the area occurred. This is not the case. The traffic study is simply using the existing formula, nothing more. There was no traffic pattern analysis, actual current volumes, or any other data collection to support existing traffic capacity with the planned volume of residents crammed into this small area. Again, portrayal of the data to confuse the issue of peak trips versus overall trips and leaving out the pattern of trips versus commercial, of, sorry, for commercial versus residential is key to find, is key to hiding the facts from all of you. Moreover, if the primary entry for traffic is Ancient Oaks Boulevard, one would conclude the primary exit is also Ancient Oaks Boulevard. To accommodate this exit requires left turns and U-turns where allowed out of the area. The alternative is the use of the roundabout by the clock tower. These traffic patterns have not been analyzed or projected impacted. Lastly, the entry for PM peak to Seven Oaks into the left lane with part of the vehicles still in the primary 56 roadway or creating a stop condition on 56 left lane, waiting to enter the left-hand turn into the Seven Oaks area. The applicant's arguments that the residential proposal was superior in all ways to the existing commercial entitlement are questionable now that the applicant is trying to accommodate commercial space into the plan and remain at 320 units. Why was this property, why has this property remained vacant? One of the property owners is Walmart. The original plans for a market there were scrapped with the, when their direction changed within the company, and their sale for the property to a potential buyer includes evaluations for corporate competition with their other Sam's Club brand. For a property rights, from a property rights perspective, the current property owners, actual market, sorry, the current property owners actually market the property as, quote, "located at the entrance of Seven Oaks, a 2,000-acre, award-winning master plan community," end quote. The fact that the landowner calls out the master plan community suggests the only one who thinks this is a good idea to rezone is the applicant under contract. In fact, on September 9th, Mr. Poole asked if the applicant would consider a vertical mixed use, and Mr. Two responded that the applicant, quote, "believes there is no present market for that product at this location." He would build it if they thought that there was a market because they do mixed use projects. He honest, he honestly and legitimately sees no viability for a mixed, vertical mixed use at this location, end quote. The only market condition that's changed between September 9th and today is the applicant's awareness of the significant opposition from the public at large and that there were significant rules and laws that undermine their plans. Finally, the applicant has submitted a new petition, including a Sparts R E M I analysis. We've already discussed that. As I noted in the previous planning commission meeting on this, meeting on this issue. this rezoning effort is a square peg, round hole scenario. Apartments exist in Seven Oaks today. We understand the MPUD has accommodations for more. The issue at hand is that there is no need to rezone this commercial, commercial area to support residential when other opportunities are already zoned in Seven Oaks to support this. Please recommend denial of the modification to the, to the MPUD, to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you and Merry Christmas again.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Before he sits down? Questions? All right. Who's ready next? You go.
Good afternoon. I am Attorney Chelsea Waller-Dawthardt. I am here representing the Seven Oaks CDD. My address is 38038 Meridian Avenue, Dade City, Florida, and I have been sworn. The question before the commission today is, is this, not is this project appropriate for Pasco County? It's, is it appropriate for parcel S19? I highly doubt anyone begged the applicant to put a mixed use development inside parcel S19. And if they did, why did they first start with just multifamily use? Essentially, they're trying their second chance at the apple, or bite at the apple, whatever the, the expression is. But let's look at the original MPUD. Much thought and deliberation went into this MPUD. It provides for a gradual transition between the different land uses and helps minimize visual and noise impacts on different land uses. This also helped establish the separate and distinct identities of the community with a clear separation between the residential areas and the retail and office areas. Over 2,400 homes exist in Seven Oaks, and these residents relied on the original MPUD when they purchased their homes within Seven Oaks. So the applicant's new proposal still deviates from that established pattern of the MPUD, and such departure will result in the property to be inconsistent and incompatible with the surrounding uses by creating sort of a hodgepodge, a character that would disrupt the established identities of the community. Employment generating uses is a major issue, and that is well discussed in the agenda memorandum. The new proposal decreases the approved 86,000 square feet of commercial down to 20,000 square feet and increases the number of residents. This is only, only going to create an even bigger gap for employment issues. Doesn't support the need for jobs and commercial use in this area. In last hearing, you heard from residents who complained about the lack of offices, lack of doctors' offices that are needed. And this certainly doesn't help. We've received their updated economic and fiscal impact analysis. There are some serious concerns with the, the truthfulness and the accuracy of those analyses. They didn't provide analysis for non-construction, and I think it's safe to assume that it wasn't included because it wasn't in their favor. So those are some serious concerns with, with the analysis that the applicant is presenting today. New apartments, there are multiple apartment complexes within the area. Enclave apartments are directly across the street. There are apartments within Seven Oaks. There are some behind the brewery just down the street. And now Mass Capital is building an apartment complex on the north of Seven Oaks, adjacent to the new Bayfront Hospital. This area in question is becoming way too saturated. We don't need any more apartment complexes. We need office space. Traffic, traffic is already a huge problem in that area, especially with all the added growth. All the residential communities are popping up all along 56 on the east side of Bruce B Downs, which only exacerbates traffic, especially being that 56 takes you to the interstate. The only access point into the proposed apartment complex and office space is through Ancient Oaks Boulevard, which we saw on the screen, the purple lines going through. That is a major access point used by residents of Seven Oaks. At the first planning commission hearing, myself and other Seven Oaks, or Seven Oaks residents expressed their disapproval with 320 apartments because of the additional traffic that this apartment complex will generate in the area and specifically on Ancient Oaks Boulevard. Ironically, at that time, the applicant argued that multifamily use generates less traffic than commercial use. So here we are again with the same concerns about traffic from 320 apartments, but now they're adding on 20,000 square feet of office. This is going to be a huge disaster for the traffic. Let's talk about space. Pasco County grew more than 19% in the last decade, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, and Wesley Chapel is one of the fastest-growing sub-markets in Tampa Bay. And this commission helped shape what our county will look like. Most people move to Pasco County because they want more space. They don't want to be on top of each other. But here, the applicant is cramming 320 units and 20,000 square feet of office space and now a parking garage on just 10.6 acres. So let's look at other apartment complexes in the area. Enclave across the street has 312 units on 43 acres. The apartment complex on the north side of Seven Oaks that's going in now next to the, the hospital will have 248 units on 16 acres. This space is way too small for this project. If Pasco County starts approving projects like this, it will set a dangerous precedent, and it will, we will become the next South Tampa or Orlando. And that's not what the current residents want. That's not Pasco County. This planning commission got it right the first time, and it should outright deny this rezoning. Once again, we've gone from bad to worse, and I don't think third time's going to be the charm. So we would request an outright denial. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe you're going to speak. Can we please come forward? State your name and address, please, and have you been sworn?
Yes, my name is Jack Christensen, and I am the current chairman of the Board of the Seven Oaks CDD. I live in 2705 Silvermont Drive in Wesley Chapel. I'll keep my remarks simple. I'd like, if I can, just to ask you to step back a little bit from the proceedings today because we've, we've been pretty much in the weeds. Details of where the buildings are going to be and where the economic impact is going to be and so forth. And I'd like to take us back 20 years ago when this development was first generated. Mixed communities are not novel. We are already a mixed community. We're both urban, we're both suburban, we're both residential, we're both commercial. The difference is, we had demarcations when we built this or started in this community to keep the commercial interest on the peripheral of the community where they have access to the highways and to the main thoroughfare, Ancient Oaks. We kept the residential inside the area where the two were quite separated. Now that plan is being violated. What I see from the stock development are beautiful buildings with pools and exercise facilities and everything. We just think that is better suited somewhere else, not shoehorned into this little lot in the parking lot of Sam's Club. I don't, I haven't heard the traffic issues sufficiently examined. If we're asking about who it affects the most, whose rights are being protected here, it should be the residents in Seven Oaks, not the county at large. As president of the CDD, we get 70, I think $97,000 a year in CDD fees from this property. I haven't seen it property addressed if it gets changed. How the deficit's going to be made up when it goes to a residential zoning? And now with this 20,000 retail, that's going to mitigate it back the other way. But we sustain, we, we prepare to have a substantial reduction in our revenues because of this. It seems that it's all in favor of stock development benefits from it. Sam's Club and Walmart and, and the others, the property owners, they benefit from getting rid of a piece of property that they haven't prepared to, in 17 years, get a bona fide commercial interest in there. So they've satisfied with shoehorning this residential. As President Obama once said, when Sarah Palin was added to the Republican ticket in 2008, this looks like they're putting lipstick on a pig. And I think that this second bite at the apple that companies have, have asked you to look at is we couldn't sell you the residential property on its own. But if we sneak in a little commercial interest, maybe that will grease the skids and we'll get it in. I implore you, on the, on the behalf of the residents of Seven Oaks, that you deny this petition. Let stock development build somewhere else, not in Seven Oaks. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. I think your lipstick and pig comment probably didn't help your case any, but, you know, I think we need to stick to the facts. So, Joel?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to briefly respond to two or three points in rebuttal, and then Mr. Henry is going to respond to the traffic comments. First, the first question or comment was about land use transitions. And if we can go to the very beginning of our PowerPoint to the, the very first slide, which is the site aerial. We, we went through this in detail at the first hearing, but in fact, this site, as I said, is the poster child for an urban infill mixed-use site because if you're talking about land use transitions, we have, we have strip retail out parcels in front of us. We have a big box retail east of us. We have an existing professional office center north of us. We have a multifamily existing northeast of us, and we have multifamily existing west of us. So I don't think there's any question but that putting multifamily where you already have multifamily retail and office is appropriate. That also goes into the question about deviation from the MPUD pattern. Now, the first speaker said we were deviating from the MPUD, MPUD pattern. The last speaker said that the MPUD pattern from the beginning was to keep the residential inside and the other uses on the perimeter. The latter speaker is correct. And if you look at the MPUD plan, and we pointed this out last hearing, all of the single-family residential is self-contained within Seven Oaks. And for all of the changes that have been made the last 35 years, the integrity of that internal single-family community has basically been maintained. What the plan and what has happened is that all the other uses have been kept on the perimeter. The retail, the office, we're on the extreme southern perimeter. So in fact, we are locating exactly on the perimeter where all the non-single-family uses have been located for 35 years. One comment was the seriousness of concerns. We now know from the second speaker, I guess it was, no, the first speaker, where the Remy model letter came from. If there's a seriousness of concern with the Remy model, the Remy model was generated by your Office of Economic Growth. That's their model, their calculations. As I said, all we did was we took Mr. Engels' calculations and we performed what used to be fifth grade math. It's probably now third grade math, but it's simply a division and multiplication function. You divide the retail output by the retail square feet, get the per-square-feet number, and multiply it times your new 20,000 square feet. That's all we did. So if there's a question about the Remy model, then there's a question about whatever the Office of Economic Growth did to run it to begin with. We didn't run that model. It was used against us initially. We simply took their own math and showed that with the new changes, we produced the benefit. As to the CDD issue, and we may not have made this clear, but we discussed it at the prior hearing, and Keith put it up today. As you know, the CDD legal documents and structure are totally independent of this proceeding and the zoning. They're adopted and approved by the county. They are in place. This parcel has a mandatory assessment on it. It has a lump sum payment for a bond, and it has an annual maintenance fee. Those will not change, no matter what the use is. It's on the tax bill, Mr. Gelder's company, and whoever owns this is going to have to keep stroking that same check. So I don't know where the, quote, "CDD deficit" is coming from because in fact, they're going to get the same money they get every year from DeBarlo and Walmart. There's just going to be another name on the, on the check, signing the check. So that's simply a factor.
I realize it's not directly relevant to what we have to decide, but do those assessments increase if you add, because of the, you're adding residential? In other words, I get your point that they have to pay CDD assessments, but typically when you, at least in my CDD, you pay a higher assessment if you're doing more development. In other words, a more intense development, you would, you just, you would pay a higher assessment. Are you, are you going to pay a higher assessment because?
We're going to pay whatever the CDD documents require us to pay. That's my point. That's a separate legal structure. And whatever those documents say and whatever their assessment methodology is, that's what will be done. I don't know, I'm not the CDD lawyer, but it has, it's not material to the zoning because it is controlled by a separate structure. And whatever that structure is, that's for the CDD lawyer to tell their board. And whatever they legally can impose, that's what we have to pay. So it's a non, it's a non-zoning issue is my point. It's a CDD.
Because your point is if the CDD has a higher assessment for 320 residential units, you'll pay it?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if, if there's a legitimate methodology in the CDD documents, we will abide by it. And then lastly, on the traffic and access comments, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Henry. I'm finished. Whenever Steve says his last word, we're done, unless you have questions.
All right, thank you.
I have, I have a question or if you want me to wait till after.
No, go ahead and ask it now.
Comment on, I know the comment was made about N2 and one of those other parcels. Can you comment on that?
About them being for sale?
Yeah, or that they're designated multifamily or?
Well, there are, we put up the map before, Mr. Williams. There still are a couple parcels, other than this one, that still have multifamily as either a permitted or an alternate use. There are two or three of them on the I-75 boundary that were converted to retail for the car dealerships. But as I said earlier, in response to Mr. Goldstein, we're only up to 800 and change of the units. There's another 800 and change left, and to my knowledge, they're just those couple of other parcels that have multifamily as a remaining permitted or alternate use. But yeah, there are a couple of parcels there. My client looked all over that area when he bought this one. So he contracted to buy what was available. And here's Steve, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Oh, you can't, you can't speak again.
We have, we have that.
And I, and I, and also I can talk to those parcels. I have done several loom conversions, people looking to convert those to retail and other, other land uses. So they, they are actively being looked at by other uses besides multifamily.
Sure, thank you.
Anyway, to, to address the traffic question, I guess I wasn't clear based on their comments, but we did the analysis, the original analysis for this project. That product, that particular parcel was allocated 400,000 square feet. There's left 119,000 square feet, generates 424 PM peak hour trips. With our project, we will be 206 difference. That's less traffic. So the issue of if you approve this, you're going to have an impact on Ancient Oaks? Yes, less traffic on Ancient Oaks versus what is currently approved for that parcel today.
Steve, I think, to clarify, I think, but the comment was that you're looking at PM peak. Have you looked at whether it's a reduction in daily or AM? I mean, other, other measurements, other?
It is a reduction in daily. We have not looked at, at the AM, but I could tell you, we've also done monitoring out there. We've also looked at the access points, looked at the existing traffic, look at what we're going to add to that traffic, and they still operate at an acceptable level of service with what, with, with the existing traffic, plus with the addition of this proposed project, the accesses, they will still operate at acceptable level of service and meet your code for the.
You know how much the reduction in daily trips is?
Pardon?
You know how much the reduction in daily trips is?
I, off the top of my head, I do not know. Yeah, because when we did the, the DRI, and it was all based on PM peak hour. So that, that's what the comparison is, but I have not done that comparison.
You know that commercial and residential have different peaks.
Sure, absolutely.
So I think that's basically what his argument was, is that you're looking at just one hour. And so, but daily would be all hours, basically, so.
Generally speaking, retail on a daily basis generates more traffic on a daily basis than multifamily does. on a daily basis than multifamily does. On an A M basis, my initial reaction would be, given the amount of reduction from retail to residential, it is probably less. But again, I can't say here absolutely, but the likelihood is that it would still be less A M traffic than what we're proposing. What was currently approved would be more traffic than what we're asking for in A M. But again, I haven't run those numbers, but just given the size of the amount of development left on that parcel, that'd be my opinion. But again, looking at it, we've done monitoring out there. We've done counts out there. We actually, before the monitoring requirement was removed from the D R Is, we monitored that every year to look at what the traffic is and those numbers. But from our standpoint, this project would be less traffic, less impact on Ancient Oaks Boulevard than what is currently approved there. Thank you.
Chairman, Nictarus Pito's Planning and Development Department. Would it be okay if I requested a five-minute break to the proceeding?
Sure, absolutely.
I request.
How long do you need, Terry?
What's that?
How long do you need?
Five minutes or so.
Okay. All right. Request a recess for five minutes? Okay.
I think so, just in a second here, we'll bring it up.
Okay. All right.
He's got a lot of notes here. I think the slide before that. One more? Oh, the other way then, sorry. That one, yes, thank you. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman, to resume.
I'm set, and we're all set. Good? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Nictarus Pito's Planning and Development Staff again. I wanted to mention just a couple of things based on the comments that we've heard and answer some of the questions also that were posed earlier in the meeting. With regard to parks and the question of parks, as the applicant noted, there's a record in the ASL. So Parks was generally, was okay with the reduction of the neighborhood park, noting that there would be an extra burden on county parks that would be caused by the 320 units. However, they were okay with this because the project will essentially provide its own exclusive amenities that residents there would pay for. So there would be amenities built into their project that would offset any local park impacts from more people going to a place that they didn't have options to go to. So because they have an option locally, it's been done in other projects where those variations have occurred.
Terry, just for my clarification. So those amenities that we looked at when they were showing swimming pools and all that kind of stuff, those were the actual, that's what's going to be built? That's not just a representation of what might be built?
I think the applicant would have to speak to that. But what we've seen in other projects is that these types of developments have built those types of amenities. Not sure if they were exactly.
Okay, well, maybe we can ask that question before we finish, but because there was another part of the representation, it was said several times, this is only a representation, it's not the actual. Yeah, so we'll get to that. Okay, thank you, Terry.
The other thing that I wanted to mention was Policy Flu 187. It focuses on contribute, you know, it says, "Past county shall encourage development, which will contribute more to the county in revenue than it will consume in services." And I just want to note that that's kind of a test of this policy. It's not necessarily a kind of race for who generates the highest net revenue. So it's not asking for highest net revenue. It's simply asking for a development that's going to contribute more to the county in revenue than it will consume in services. Having said that, I think to get back to Mr. Girardi's question earlier regarding the significance of the construction versus the non-construction phase value analysis. As I have been conferring with staff on the side with regard to the different analyses, why there is an inclusion of construction and why there's an exclusion of constructions. Basically, it's in order to outline when residential development can get credit for certain types of, for transient employment, which gets averaged over a tenure period, basically. So there's a distinction that is there, and it is purposeful. I may have glossed over it earlier in the hearing, but I just want to correct my record for that. So I do think that we need to work with the applicant and O E G to get the other shoe, so to speak, that we have the analysis with the inclusion of the construction. But I think we should get the analysis for the exclusion of the construction. Should be willing to work with O E G and the applicant to get that in time for the Board of County Commissioners so that they have a full picture of what that looks like there as well. That's what I had to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Terry, while you're on that point, and it's up to Planning Commission what they do, but I'm just saying, if you're going to fully analyze this before the B C C, you're right, it does say contribute more in taxes and more in revenue than it will consume in services. The reason I asked about the impact fees is because it does consume parks, libraries, and schools. I mean, those are services that it consumes, and impact fees do offset part of that consumption. That's why I asked the question whether the increase in revenue from the taxes will offset or not capturing through impact fees. I think it is directly relevant to this policy. And so it looked like the analysis was showing a profit, or especially when he updates his numbers, okay? Show the true ad valorem impact of that additional project. It may be that it does offset that delta in impact fees. I can probably, based on my quick glance, I think it probably does. But what's the harm in doing the math?
Right, and that's part of the reason why I wanted to correct myself from earlier and make sure that we can get the other shoe on this one for the board.
All right, Terry, thank you. So, Joel, you want to come up? I guess we have some questions before we have a motion. My question you heard?
Yeah, the park question. I'm going to let Keith answer the second part as to exactly what amenities he's going to build. But the park waiver that the Parks Department gave us, they're very careful about that. What they say is, we agree that your park minimum is X point, whatever acreage. And then what they say is, if you build these following amenities, then you get to take credit for that square footage against your park requirement. If you don't build them, then you've got to do the park requirement. So they don't take it at your word either. To actually get the offset, you have to construct that area. With that said, Keith can quickly tell you the amenities that.
Yeah, I guess the two.
If you need them, if you need.
Two areas of concern that I had were that we did have adequate park facilities, that the new residents there weren't going to be impacting park facilities that already existed. And the other aspect of it was the traffic. And we've already, I think Mr. Henry has addressed that.
Yes.
Although I would like to see him readdress for the County Commission, the daily numbers. I think that's a valid question.
We're happy to do that. We'll put on the record that he'll modify that and do both daily trips. And the reason, of course, he did P M P because that's how the current approval is measured by the county. But we're happy to also do daily. And like I said, if we don't build those amenities, then we don't get credit against the park requirement at all. So we're committed to doing that. So any other questions for the team?
I have a series of questions. I don't know if you want to let Keith ask to answer the park question?
So I think the conditions of approval outline what counts and what doesn't count. And it does require the minimum that we have to provide. So we will provide the minimum at least, and we will follow the definition of the condition of approval. So with respect to what's actually provided, you know, tend to provide as many of the components that I shared with you in our prior projects. And we will follow the definition and the requirements to comply and provide all those things. So obviously, this project still has to go through permitting and design, so it remains conceptual at this point. But it's in our best interest to provide all the things that I shared with you because in essence, that's what we believe separates us from a marketing standpoint, is providing those robust onsite amenities. And we'll provide as many as we can provide in the project to market to our customers. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Girardi, you may want to look at Condition 10, which is, I don't know what page it is in your packet, because it's a big packet, but it's Page 708 of 749 on my screen.
So that outlines that one acre minimum will be provided onsite. What is the, and I'm assuming there's a request for a variation here from the code, which it says, what does the code require? I mean, what are we going from, three acres to one acre or?
Right, the code technically requires one per 100 units, which would be 3.2. But as you know, there's not a single multifamily project that's been approved at that level. So it's always approved at less. And what they do is even though you heavily amenitize these and they serve the same function, as Mr. Gray said. And what, what they do is even though you heavily amenitize these, and they serve the same function, as Mr. Gray said, they still want some green space in addition to those amenities. So that's why you have the one acre minimum, that it doesn't matter how many of those amenities he provides, fitness center, pool, rec room, they've still got to provide the one acre of the green, traditional green area. And that's why he was showing those on the, on the site plan.
So the, on the slide that you guys showed, I think somebody brought up that one of the areas shown was a pond, or was a DRA or something like that, that's irrelevant, you still have to provide an acre. If you can't provide it there, you gotta find somewhere else to provide it.
But, that's correct, but believe it or not, and as an engineer, you understand the cause of this, he's actually going to recontain that with underground drainage, so that he can put that dog park over the top of it. That's the kind of money they're spending here to amenitize this, uh, project.
So, to be clear, though, I'm not sure Joel stated that entirely correctly. It's one acre, but that can be both outdoor and indoor, the way I'm reading condition 10, so.
Correct.
The exact configuration parks, the Parks Department has to approve at some point in the future, but it, it's one acre, but that can be either outdoor and/or indoor space, if that makes sense.
And it is, and it is entirely consistent with what they've approved in all of our multifamily projects the last.
But what is not in that list is a retention pond.
Correct, no, that, that doesn't count. And there is, if you recall, too, there is already a large trail system around that lake directly across H and Oaks Boulevard. There's a large existing outdoor trail system around that lake that is part of the MPUD that, that we have access to, and that we will be paying into the association for that, you know, for that benefit.
And I'm, I guess, as well, while I had the floor, I've just got a couple other questions here, just go through all mine and get them out of the way. Um, talk about the parking variation that's being requested. My understanding, and I know this is outlined in condition, there's several statements in here made in condition, whatever it is, something B.
Yeah, it's in, um, boy, it's a long one.
It's, it's B, Park.
Thirty, thirty-four under land use. And it's in subpart B.
Page 716 of your packet.
There, there's a couple of things that, I guess, just of, you just jump out at me, and, and I don't think this condition's changed from the last time you came, to where you're asking for a variation for the multifamily components and for the parking. But then there's also a section that looks like it's been added that eliminates you or removes you from providing any additional parking for the retail office space.
Well, that was, that was actually, you know, it's routinely suggested by the county, to be honest with you, to encourage people to do mixed use. There've been two others approved this year that I handled. They said, if you'll do mixed use, we're not gonna have you require additional parking, because a lot of people here think that things are overparked, and you encourage more pedestrian cross-connection activity if you don't overpark. They don't like big parking fields, so it's kind of catch 22, to be honest with you. We get pushed to not overpark. The ratio we have of 1.5 one-bedroom and two spaces for, per two and three-bedroom, that will actually generate more spaces than have been approved. The rule that they've been approving is 1.9 space per unit, regardless of unit type, and in some cases, as low as 1.7. So our numbers are actually higher than most of the others we've had approved in the last two years. And as we said, the other way we address this, I hear what you're saying, but that's why we committed to Mr. Goldstein, that number one, we, we have to do structured parking, and that we have to make that first floor available to non-residents. So, the simple fact is, if you combine this with the structured parking requirement, we're going to be parking at higher than this, this is a minimum.
Well, that, I mean, that, that was kind of where I was getting.
Right, we will clearly be parking at a higher number, uh, because of the structured parking. But in all fairness, until he gets his engineer and his architect to actually do this, you know, we can't, we can't get that number. But, you know, we're subject to site plan control, and trust me, staff will be on, on the parking.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and, uh, let's see. Um, it, I didn't see it outlined in the conditions, but again, there's multiple pages here on the conditions, but i- is there a timing for the requirement of the mixed-use component?
Uh, it, it, it will be built with the building, the, the, the thing about vertical mixed use is you don't have a choice. You can't build your second, third, and fourth floors if you don't build your first. So he will have to build out that first floor space when he builds the building. Now, no one can promise you when the tenant's gonna sign the lease and off, often open the coffee shop and the boutique, and, you know, whatever else. So there's certainly, no one has a crystal ball to know when commercial tenants will sign up and open a business, but he will provide the space, the commercial space concurrent with the initial building construction.
So, Joel, just, maybe this is something that requires clarification, 'cause Mr. Girardi may have a point. The condition says that you have to put 20,000 square feet of retail or office should be located on the ground floor of one or more buildings. So it doesn't technically say you have to put it in the first building, so.
We, we, we're okay that it has to be built as part of the initial construction. Trust me, he's not building this one building at a time, he's gonna build the entire project. I mean, that's the way multifamily gets built. But we're fine with that, David, if, if we say that the retail office space has to be built concurrent with the initial building construction. That, that's entirely appropriate, and not a problem. 'Cause that's clearly his intent.
Um, I, I, I had a comment here on the traffic, and I think somebody made a question about the traffic, people coming out of the facility on H notes Boulevard. They have no way to ma- if I understood them correctly, they indicated that they have no way to go out unless they went to the roundabout to turn around. There, there's two median openings at each one of the driveways, so.
Yeah.
I, I just, I don't know where that comment was coming from, but, um, also, I guess, just kind of just general comment, I mean, no, I, I, I just was.
Yeah, Mr. Henry says you're correct, there're median openings at both of those.
I mean, and, and really, just a couple of just general comments from up here. I mean, I, I guess you can probably test this, but this isn't really your second bite at the apple, and I don't think your client wanted to come back and pay you to come back again. This was something that you had to come back and were forced to come back.
We got waxed, right.
And then, I, I, again, I, I've heard it over and over again, just even sitting up here, that, you know, the commission and everybody pushes for these vertical mixed-use projects, and I think it's a, really kind of commend your client for willing to step out and look and do something like this. I mean, you know, I, I, I keep hearing, you know, the, the point was made about trying to cram too much into a small, small space. Well, I hear planning language every day where they say they want density. Okay, so which one is it? Do you want density? Do you, what do you want? So, I guess th- those are my points. I mean, this developer, again, I hear it all the time, too, even from the commission, there's too much multifamily, there's too much multifamily. Well, believe it or not, and whether anybody wants to admit it, it, this is a business. I mean, he's here to make money, and I don't think he would go out on a limb to, to do this project if he didn't think there was the need there for this project. So I guess, I, I just wanted to make that point before anybody else says anything else.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's why you're writing out.
That's why I'm against it.
Can I make a comment, Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I still have in the same issues that I have, uh, on September. Again, maybe I need to recuse myself, because I live in Seven Oaks, that is something that David need to tell me if I have to, but I totally.
I don't think the mere fact that you, there's, there's.
Sorry?
Over, with 2,000 residents who live in Seven Oaks, I don't think the mere fact that you live in this community is enough to.
Uh, I agree with that. I just wanna be clear and say it in, in public. And, uh, I live there, and I go through this, uh, road every single day. I cannot imagine the number of, uh, units that you are proposing are going to be manners in the proper way in the traffic ways. So, that's why I against this project, loud and clear.
Is it the traffic that concerns you, Roberta?
The, the, not just the traffic, let me be clear, it's few components that concern. The size of this lo- again, I love vertical structure, nothing wrong against that. We need more vertical buildings in this pa- in this county, no doubt about it. My background as an architect, my background as a general contractor, I love this type of structure. That's why I, I live there, I know the size of the land very well, and I believe the size of the land is so small for the product they are going to deliver. This product can be really well done in another part of Seven Oaks. It's not about Seven Oaks, it's about the access to this, this, uh, development in the specific area that they are proposing. So it's size of the land, location, and traffic.
Chris? Anything for you?
No, sir?
None.
I, I, uh, a couple of things strike me. One is how long this land has been vacant. Uh, and, and we are making a seismic shift, uh, away from big box stores. It's also not lost on me that the MPUD has 1,700-plus units at its access and granting, and, and this would appear, I mean, it falls far, far, far short of that. I, I did express concerns at the, uh, last meeting, uh, about the parking. I, I think the plan and, uh, the type of parking they're putting in on the primary uh, drive that will take you to Sam's, I, I think does mitigate, uh, some of the concerns that I had. And I, a- again, to, to Jamie's point, I think the economics, if we have someone here that, uh, believes in this, and I, and, and frankly, uh, from my perspective, we have a, a housing shortage in Pasco County, that I see every day from, uh, from my position. So, um, at this point, I'm, I'm in favor of the proposal.
Yeah, I mean, again, what's, what's been represented here today, and I believe what I've heard staff say is, is the two things that they're asking for the variation fro- for, which would tend to lead people to believe that the parcel's too small. If you have to ask for a variance, the parcel's too small for what you're trying to do. But what they're asking for the variation on is stuff that's granted to every other multifamily project, the, the smaller park area. And then for the reduction in the parking spaces, um, I mean, they're making other provisions, the provision of the parking deck. I mean, so they're, they're doing things to mitigate what they're asking for the variation from, which again, is the same thing that other multifamily projects have asked for and have been granted. So, that's why my position is where it is.
Okay, Chris?
Sure, um, you know, I understand Mr. S- Mr. Sia has his concerns, but I, I agree with Ja- what Jamie is saying. I, you know, I think this is perfect location for a project like this. And I, and I appreciate them going back and now doing some commercial on the first floor. I think that's awesome, and, um, you know, people are able to walk to those, those amenities, which is what we want. And, uh, from the school's perspective, as Mr. Two has already said, you know, those entitlements were there from the get-go. And so the, the school district has, has planned for, for that, and so they're well under that. So from the school's perspective, we don't have an issue with, um, those multifamily units, and as, and as I say every time, you know, multifamily generates fewer students than, um, that same number of single-family houses. So, to me, this is, uh, a good location for this project.
All right. So if there are no further comments, I'd be open to a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, just with the addition of tho- those couple of items that were addressed, that updated REMI analysis, and then the, the, looking at the additional or the total daily trips for the traffic, so.
I'll sec- I'll second that.
To be clear, does that include modifying the structured parking condition to say that it's required and that the first, the ground floor will be publicly accessible?
Precisely.
And does it also include the requirement that the minimum 20,000 square feet of retail and office be constructed with the initial building construction?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was part of your motion.
All four of those things, like I said.
You read his mind.
Good job, David.
Exactly. Okay, so we have a motion, and I think we have a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, any further discussion of the motion? All favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Okay. All right, motion carries.
Motion, motion to adjourn, unless we have something else?
Just a second. No, just a second.
About to know what you want for dinner.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm taking orders. Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, um, I just wanted to bring your attention to the noted item on your agenda. It's the 2022 public hearing schedule for the Planning Commission. Just wanted to make sure that you, um, took a look at that. We just kind of like, are showing you just the Planning Commission meeting dates, not the board meeting dates, so that way, that's what you're taking a look at, and certainly, you can now move to adjourn, just wanted you to be aware of that.
And Denise, we don't approve those, those are.
That was approved by the Board of County Commissioners, um, about a, maybe about a month or so ago.
Okay. Denise, you just do such a wonderful job.
You do, yes, absolutely.
You're very kind, you're very kind.
And Dave.
To adjourn, so I could talk about important stuff and off the record.
Second.
And Peter as well.
Oh, second.
So, um, I wanna wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, whatever you, um, you know, you celebrate, and, um, and Liam loves you so much that all of y'all get cookies, so.
See?
See, I told you, it's all about dinner.
So, I, we're, we're very sorry that we're messing up your A1C, or, you know, whatever. But, uh, it's, uh, it's coming from love, from a place of love, so. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Have a good trip, hope you're good to go.
I hope I can.